That's how I tell the story is I'm standing in the hallways like this. My hands behind my back, just trying to greet the kids. Turned out I wasn't giving them a great impression. All this with the mask on, my hands and my feet apart. There was a small group of students, African American students who contacted the school before the school year this year and asked for a sit down with me. And I really didn't tell me, they just said they wanted to get to know me. And I thought this could go in a lot of directions. But I got a sneak preview from one of the mothers, they just said, listen, it's kind of the way you look. So I went to the meeting with my jumpsuit peeled down to my waist. My body armor and my belt and my hat and everything sitting off to the side, it was a goofy dinosaur T-shirt. And I, and we talked. Now, they said it was partly the way you stand and I had my hands behind my back and I explained, I've got no pockets. Well, I've got a thousand pockets, but now I can put my hands in. And they kind of giggled at that. And I said, I have my feet apart because I'm wearing 30 pounds of equipment. If I put my feet together, I'll fall over and then I'll look silly. And they laughed at that and sort of, we started talking, it took a little while for them to really say what was on their mind, but the kids really started opening up and the parents. And it was a lesson for me, I'm a really friendly guy, I tell the kid I'm super friendly, but they couldn't tell, and I didn't realize that. I've been a cop for a while and had lost track of, you just connect with people and the kids were not getting that. And they're bringing in some media images of police as well, and then they see me and I'm feeding into that, so I didn't know. We spoke for about an hour, as we did it, I put all my equipment back on until I was back in everything. And we finished. Where I said, listen, I'm a high five fist bump guy, you can do that, if you don't, I'm not going to chase you down, you know, I'll say good morning, if you've got stuff on your mind, keep going. But it was a powerful meeting, we were all laughing at the end, having a good time, the parents are really cool. And then I was able to use that meeting and tell the exact story I've just told to other groups in the school where I said, hey, this is on me, I didn't know. A courageous group of students reached out and just opened up the whole thing, I addressed a parent group, like 300 parents and told them that story and it's made a massive difference. It is, it's been huge because kids are coming to me now. Okay, so I had just today, one child who's been borderline suicidal, she's been in and out of hospital a few times. And she came and she wanted to talk to me and she got 40 minutes with me. The time chosen by her because we have that trust now. And that kind of thing's on, I was late today because I was chasing, not chasing, sorry. There's a child about to be outed by a massive text message. Okay, so he's come to the school and they called me and so I was trying to do what I could for that. And there's kind of two sides of that. One is, it may not actually be a crime here, there's something horrible happening, but it might be a crime. The law struggles to catch up with technology. So part of my job is, well, how do I help this person through this? I go, well, we need to talk about your resilience and circling your family and emotional wagons to, to get you through what may happen in the next few hours. I've just gone on a massive rant, I know, and she finally asked me, would it be to tell one story? When I heard about this meeting, there's one thing I want to say before I forget. If you take away SROs, we won't lose our jobs. So it's, I don't have a motivation to save my job here. I lose my opportunity, that's what I lose. I can't have those moments that I've been having in the, in the short time I've been doing this, if that doesn't happen. If I'm a patrol officer and these things happen, sure, I'll drop by the school or another patrol officer will. And they'll try to get that kid to open up and tell us what's really happening. But you've got to establish trust as a stranger, these kids know me now and they come to me now. And I will never have that when I'm a, when I'm visiting the school, dropping in because someone called 911, it's just not the same thing. Does that make sense? If you have any questions on everything I just gave you, I just gave you a lot.
I do, I do want to give the board a little bit of an opportunity to interact here. I do also want to be clear that it's not like we've made a massive decision around SROs. What's happened at our other schools is that, because each of our high schools is in a different jurisdiction and those jurisdictions have, correct me if I'm wrong. Have been unable to supply us with an SRO, so we have gone in a different direction. Now, that hasn't been the issue at Skyline, so I don't believe any decision has been made about Skyline.
And that's, in the main, I appreciate that, and like I mentioned with Nate, you know, the anti bullying and people, you know, getting involved. And that was just amazing is, we really feel that there's a lot of great connections and it's not perfect. And don't, don't get me wrong, there's going to be people that aren't going to be happy with the fact that, you know. Any of us are wearing a blue, you know, a badge and we may not ever make them happy. But our goal, similar to what, you know, we've been doing here, is try and keep breaking down those barriers. Find some small piece of common ground that we can build and grow on. And if we can do that with the, you know, our, our young adult community and, and, and grow, that's. To me, that's, you know, an amazing opportunity. And again, I know that, that, the mayor and the council and the city manager all support it. And I know when you start looking at the financial piece, and I think it's important. We're going to be more than a security officer, we can also do more than a security officer. They'll get training, and again, we heard that, but a lot of that training is provided by our police officers. And although the training needs to be the same, you need to really look at. So are you going to get the 40 hours of crisis intervention training? And are you going to be doing the eight hours of crisis intervention training minimum every single year to stay up on all the current events, all the, that's the training that we get and. You know, and we'll share it and provide it as much as we can. And then when it comes to planning our major incidents and those things, it's just that experience and maybe a different level of training to support what your staff gets. And even more so can we build on that is important. The cost, remember, includes, I mean, if something bad happens. You may get sued, but the sheriff's office ultimately is going to be handling all of the risk. You know, and, and the, I mean, I'm not saying that you're not going to get it, no, what I'm saying is, no, what I'm saying is, I see that. I understand, I said, you'll still see people coming after you, but the, the sheriff's office is going to do a lot of the work as far as on the risk management piece. And that's part of why the city contracts even, because it lowers the overall risk, just with the training, everything that we're required to go through. So it's just, the training and everything helps tamp that down a bit as opposed to individually, if it's just security, that the vehicles, the equipment, that's all part of what you get, it's not extra and in addition to. And so when you start adding those things up on an individual officer, the cost is similar. But perhaps some of the things that we can add are different and just make it a better team environment. So, yeah, that's the focus there, so.
Okay, so do you want to give the board, oh, I lost one, an opportunity if there were any questions on your end of these folks?
Or of the mayor?
Or of, yeah.
Frankly, you brought up what I was going to, which was just a baseline of decisions to date and making sure we were clear, we're clear there. So that was, I guess, the biggest thing from my seat.
And again, that's why I just want, we just wanted to come and face to face, we have a chance to do that and just let you know that we really do care of it.
It was more just a comment, I just think it's, you know, it's really important because what you've talked about, at least to some extent, is that it's all teamwork, right? Because what's really important is having the people in the buildings with our kids, getting to know the kids, however it all works out. But to have this truly be a team effort and really engaging with our students and in our buildings.
And hopefully, I know for you, and depending what Issaquah does, or maybe it just is going to be school security because they can't address that. I know that I got the commitment from the major down at unincorporated Liberty to put somebody in there and they did. And then that's kind of got a little sideways because of the COVID requirements, but there is a commitment to put someone in there. And again, you know, I approach things a little bit differently. That team environment, whether it's with Issaquah, City of, unincorporated, even down Liberty, it's still something that we can all benefit from and work a little bit better together, which hasn't happened in the past. And again, last year with COVID and my first year being, we just didn't, that it really existed at the school or anything else. But I, I think we can raise the bar across the board for all parties involved. Security, SROs, and then the district and, and law enforcement in the community. So we want to be a part of that and try to continue to make that better.
I think I had a comment, but I was just going to say, I wanted to make sure the mayor and, and city manager had an opportunity, so let's talk to the mayor.
Well, I just wanted to, one, I wanted to state, you know, how much the council really does back this program from how many times we work with chief to go out and, you know, work with the kids, whether it be, you know, park. Whether we send them to a park for, hey, we've got a bunch of kids that are out there swimming at this park or that park. And, and you know, and so it's the interaction with the kids that is just reinforced year round. And so, but I also want to talk to the issue of, not only from, from a councilmatic standpoint. But a mom who had, who's raised three kids in this community, but I've also worked, you know, over 15 years for the Lake Washington School District as a principal assistant. And three years ago, I was the one, I happened to have been working the day over on Union Hill where we had the person come across, come up who had, would happen to be on campus. And we got the phone call saying, we got somebody on campus with what looks like a gun. And I'm going to tell you from somebody who gets that call and has to go and work with the principal. I want to know where my SRO is, I want to know who I can talk to, who can take that call and can do something about it. I want to know who is going to have, who has the pull and who has the call can do something more than what I can do. Because somebody has to make the building safe and somebody has got to have that pull and somebody has got to have the qualifications that I don't have. And that to me is, you know what? Nobody knew anything was going to happen that day. You, I wish we could all have a crystal ball and know when emergency was going to happen, we don't have that. And our, our whole job is to make sure that, yes, and I totally understand that you have to weigh the budget and you've got, but our job is to make sure that these kids are safe. And if you want to look at the perfect example of what an SRO is to me, it is when you go, when you look at Chaitman Avenue. And you look at an avenue that was named after a past SRO. And you looked at, you know, the 500 plus students that went to that gentleman's funeral. And was honored and loved by all of those kids. Because that is to me, a perfect SRO. He was loved by so many kids and he could walk into that school. And to me, those are the shoes to fill. Because when there's an emergency, you need to have the, I need somebody who that office can call and know what's going on. And know, guess what, I need you out front there and able to protect the school. But also, I need somebody there who knows the kids and knows, you know, all the things that, who knows? Okay, you know what, I know him, but you know what, he's a good kid, let me talk to him. So from my standpoint, SROs are invaluable. And I understand, we didn't have one the day that that happened over in Union Hill. I can tell you, one of the frequent phone calls I had was to high schools over in Summamish. Because they wanted to know, is he still over there, where is he going, is he coming our way? And I can tell you, that was, it was heart wrenching to me because of the fact that. You needed somebody there who could, who could make that call. What we were doing, we were calling the police because we didn't have one on campus. Anyway, that's my two cents worth, I believe the, I believe wholeheartedly in this program. From somebody who works in the schools, I love this program. And I just think that it is so worth the dime that you put into it.
Hey, thank you for that, appreciate it. I don't know, is the city manager still there, did he have anything you needed to add or, oh, there he is.
Hi, I'm, I'm here to be supportive in any way I can. I've worked with SROs way back in my time in the fire service, but as a city manager in many communities. And I deeply admire the chair, the chief and his staff for what they bring to Summamish. And in these times, it's so difficult to often bridge the gap in communications and trust. And Summamish PD does a terrific job of doing that with the children and young adults in this community. I'm just very pleased that we have that program here, but thank you.
Thank you.
I probably should have started at the beginning by just saying, first of all, thank you, thanks for your service to our community. Thanks for the long history that we have with the Summamish PD and the SRO program. And I agree with a lot of what I've heard you say about the relationship and the coordination. We've actually had a very positive experience, if you, if, go back to those listening sessions. And you may not be aware that we actually conducted some listening sessions before the city of Issaquah did. Through our equity department had already done outreach to some of our student groups because we were hearing things. And a lot of this was in the wake of the George Floyd murder and there was just a, there was a national conversation that was happening. And, but I, I do want to be clear, we've had a good experience historically with our SRO program in all three regions of our district. We also recognize that we have this kind of distinct communities within our district, they're not monolithic. And which is why we're in a situation right now where we have an SRO at one of our comprehensive high schools, but not at the other two. It sounds like Summamish and it certainly appears from here tonight, you're not having some of the staffing problems that we know have a. Kind of been an issue in the Issaquah Police Department. And to some degree, you referenced the King County as well and the situation we had out there earlier this year. So I just, I want to be clear about that, we appreciate what our SROs have done for us and the program and it's been in our system. I've been here 21 years and I came and I had an SRO when I was a principal at Issaquah Middle School, I mean, we had an SRO at Issaquah High. And the way we've structured it is you serve the whole region. So they're housed at our comprehensive high schools, but you know, like Nate, I'm sure has been to Beaver Lake before and Pine Lake. And we'll even go to an elementary school when they're needed as well. So I just wanted to make sure that we got on the record with that gratitude for the program that we've had. And again, we had Dave as an SRO for 13 years in one of our schools and we've had some wonderful success with the program. It was interesting though, I was, I was actually just listening to one of those sessions, the one that the city of Issaquah sponsored. Last spring and a community member asked a question, and I have to be honest, I felt a little dumb, especially as the person who. Is charged with overseeing the entire school district. And the question was, you've had an SRO program in Issaquah for 21 years, Issaquah School District, how many times have you reevaluated it? And the answer was never. And so, you know, I think it was in, it's important for us and the timing was now to just kind of take a top to bottom look. I honestly thought that was going to be really more the work that was going to happen this year. But our timeline got kind of accelerated at first when the city of Issaquah said they didn't think they would be able to provide an officer. And then when King County wasn't going to be able to, and then at the last minute did, and then, as you know, that didn't work out so well. So, so we kind of ended where we were. So I really do appreciate your coming here, your advocacy for the program and sharing with us. Because this was kind of the process we envisioned happening as well. So as of right now, the decisions are that we don't have SROs in two of our schools, but we do at Skyline and that, that's where we're at. But we didn't even have a director of, of security until just a few years ago. And, you know, we are, we're, we're kind of growing up as a district. When I came here 21 years ago, we had 13,000 students, we climbed all the way to 21,000 before losing 1,600 in our recent COVID student losses. But our high schools are still very, they're, they're at high capacity as well. So, so this is an ongoing process, we feel very fortunate to have a longtime veteran of the King County Sheriff's Office. And 13 year veteran of the SRO program to help kind of guide us through this conversation. And frankly, we need more security staff than we've had historically, we're just bigger, things are more complex. And, you know, just as an example, we were recently using Dave and his team, we were talking before this meeting started, we, we ran almost 1,700 vaccination appointments through here. But when you're bringing in those kinds of crowds, it's nice to have a presence sometimes. So we can, you know, just for crowd management, traffic control and all of those things. So we appreciate the relationship and this is an ongoing conversation for us as a system as well. That's all I wanted to share, thank you.
So we're kind of at time unless there were any last urgent words anybody had. But I really, I want to echo what Superintendent Thiele said, I really do appreciate your coming here to talk to us and your service to our community, greatly appreciated. And, yeah, thank you. I don't know, yeah, I'm sorry, and Director Moraldo.
Can I just publicly apologize for being late, I completely missed it, this was at 4:30, so my apologies, thank you for your service.
Arlen, did you have anything?
Yeah, I think when it comes to partnership standpoint and returning value to the community, because this is all taxpayer money, both in Summamish and in this class school district. Part of partnership is, so there's been 52 school days this year, how many of them have, has Skyline had coverage of?
52 school days? If there hasn't been somebody there, probably four.
No, that you haven't been there, not somebody, you.
Me specifically? Probably.
Eight, right, so we're talking 15% of the time so far? And so part of an SRO program that sets it apart from just being, I don't know what other job titles you have, is that relational aspect, right? And so if you really want to leverage that relational aspect, you've got to show me as a Skyline parent to be. Like that that relational part is the factor, the single most driving factor and part of the partnership is showing up.
So can I, can I respond to that?
That's an easy response.
I'm happy to respond to that, absolutely. But if you, if you guys are out of time, I'd be more than happy to talk to you.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't want to leave that out there and not give you the opportunity to respond, so go ahead.
So when we talk about that being accountable, I think that also as an SRO, too many times we see SROs that are in other parts of the country. We see SROs that are older, longer in their careers have kind of sat on their laurels a little bit, right? They don't seek out training, they don't seek out to better themselves, they don't seek out professionally, do things a different way, right? They don't try to mold themselves to be a better officer, a better SRO or a better person. And to do that, it takes a little bit of training. So unfortunately, some of these training classes don't occur always in the summer. So if we want to do things and we want to better ourselves and become that outstanding SRO or that outstanding police officer and be that good partner. Sometimes those classes or those meetings or things like that that we have to do occur during the school day. And I think that we've done our best to make sure that there is coverage there, whether it's bringing in a very trusted deputy that has worked in the school before. To cover those days and which is paid for by the city. Or if that's not available, working with the other two SROs in the city, having them come by, having them aware that I'm not at the school that day. Right, and also being available to the admin via phone, via radio. And if I'm close to training and something's happening and you know what, I need to be there, then that's where I go and I've done that. There was actually a training that I was at in Kirkland where Director Montalva called me and he goes, hey man, would you mind going to Beaver Lake? I said, absolutely, and I left the training that day and I went immediately to Beaver Lake. Because you're right, the commitment is to you first, absolutely. That's, does that answer the question?
Yeah, I mean, I think that there needs, part of the partnership needs to be a really thorough look on what the training schedule looks like. Because we only have 180 days that we're paying for and we paid dearly for those 180 days. So I need to make sure, as someone who's overseeing a very big taxpayer bill, that it actually is deriving the relational value as well as, I heard the safety concerns. I want to make sure that we focus on the safety part, not the fear part, because I felt like a lot of the conversation was leading towards the fear part. And, and I don't think that's why any of us are here.
Okay, so thank you very much for that, I certainly appreciate it. And, yeah.
And I would say, I would come back as many times as you would have us. If you are hearing things about us, we will come and we will answer to it. Everybody wants police accountability, you won't get it unless we talk. We will come and answer any question you have anytime you want to. No one has to come and say, well, I heard this at the school and you go, well, I don't know if that's true, we'll come. We'll keep doing it until the light is shone, thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you very much.
Thanks again.
Yeah, yeah, so Stephen, do we want to put, break, a five minute break on the, the. Yeah. So Stephen, do we want to put, break a five-minute break on the, the? I'm sorry, and we did not have our microphone on. So I apologize for the delay. We were having technological computer issues. And we weren't able to access the internet. So that is more or less fixed. And we are going to at least start the conversation on sort of trying to make sense of the teacher listening sessions that we had. We had two of them back in February, March of 2020, kind of in that time before the pandemic. And you all had the third one somewhat more recently. What was it? Last month? Already forgotten. And Harlan was gracious enough to send us the mentee slides from all the different presentations, because I have to say, although I took copious notes on the first two, it was a very long time ago. I can kind of start with some observations and then I would like to open it up to you guys. We we talked about three things. Basically, we talked about equity. We talked about positive behavior, social emotional skills as a social emotional learning strategies. And we asked them basically, what could the board be doing better differently for you? As I went through my notes and the mentee, kind of the main themes that I got were, we liked the equity training. We liked the initial training. But we need more support about what actually happens in the classroom. And we kind of need an action plan of where are we going now? And there was some conversation about more support for educators of color. I kind of got the feeling middle school, high school, there were mixed reviews on the social emotional learning curriculum. That the theory was good. We weren't convinced the curriculum was the best thing for kids. And there was some conversation around needing more supports in schools. And interestingly, even in the two that we held before the pandemic, there was a lot of conversation about class size. And some pushback on data that the district was too focused on data. So those were kind of the key themes that I got out of my notes. And I will defer to the other four of you, because you may have gotten something different.
I'll add a couple. So I agree with some of the, what's interesting is some of the themes were consistent pre and post or intra COVID for sure. So class size did come up. What it, what it means to put the equity work, the equity class into action, I tried to genericize it across the couple, a couple of feedbacks. So what, what is making it real really look like? And how do we get there? And then I think that the other item that's consistent is the feedback loop. So what is the real way of hearing the voice on the ground, the teachers in the classroom? And having that feel like it's making a meaningful way into our conversations as a board and the policies we enact. So I think that last one was included in both, both eras of the conversation for sure.
Yeah. And I would say there was there was a fair bit of feeling that as things go from the classroom through the administration or through the levels of administration to the board, that something's getting lost in the translation.
Right. It's kind of that, there a disconnect in there. And, and then especially towards this, the last session that we had more of a stated distrust between the two.
Yeah. And that's, that's actually not too surprising in that last year was a tough year and there were a lot of trust issues. Anybody else?
I would, one of the things is we, they noted at Pine Lake that they were using the character strong rather than the second step. Because they felt the second step, and that's the middle school SEL program really wasn't meeting their needs. And so I'm just curious as to whether or not teaching and learning or the Ministry of Staff has looked at that. So that was back in January of 2019, right? When we had that, or 2020, when we had that conversation. So I'd be interested in what that was. And I know I see the, the, the look of confusion by Director Morse. But I did, I'm not misstating that, right?
Like I got it now. Director Mado, thank you for the question. The middle schools, the curriculum that is to be implemented and that has been directed to be implemented is our second step curriculum for social emotional learning. That being said, our character strong curriculum that is supported by the Iskwa Schools Foundation is also an approved curriculum, but it should not supplant or replace the second step curriculum. I have received feedback that in certain circumstances, staff feel that the character strong applies to what they're teaching. That being said, the second step curriculum is, is a good curriculum as well. So it is intended to be a addition or a support, not a replacement for the second step. So based on the feedback you've given tonight, I will follow up with Principal Caponegro and make sure that that is.
I'm not saying that they're replacing it, but I'm saying they prefer it. So
Yes, yeah, I've heard that.
From all of that is that they do not really like the second step program and the character strong seems to be more age appropriate for the students.
Yeah, I, I think we would, it would be, it could be a bigger conversation. I have not actually delivered those lessons. So I'm a little bit hesitant to articulate any specifics on how that's implemented. I think that would be disingenuous. I've heard similar feedback that the character strong is a little more engaging. But that being said, the second step is in fact our adopted. Now, the good news is especially this year, as compared to when we were in remote learning, we have more time to implement our social emotional learning at all of our middle schools. As you know, the schedules last year during the remote phase were different, quite a bit different. And we were teaching social emotional learning one time a week, whereas now we have basically Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday are those opportunities to be with students. So we have more time. So there is ample time to cover both of those curriculums throughout the school year. And that's really kind of the plan. Interestingly enough, I'm in the process of working with our student interventions department to look at some additional second step lessons and actually work to dovetail how those lessons mirror or may be covered in our health classes so that we're more effectively balancing between what we're teaching in health and social emotional learning. Because a lot of that goes hand in hand. So there's a nice logical dovetail connection there. And if we're teaching it in health class, maybe that is something we don't have to enforce as much in social emotional learning. We can teach other skillsets there as well. Great feedback though. I appreciate it.
Well, one more question for you. For the social emotional learning lessons in the middle school. Is that, what, where is it embedded in their day? Is it embedded within other subjects or do they have, they carved out a form of a like homeroom? It's been a while since I've had kids in middle school and I know that's kind of changed. So is it in a standalone place or is it embedded across?
Some schools, it basically like extend a period of the day. So maybe first period is like, say, an hour and 20 minutes long. And 25 or 30 minutes of that would be dedicated to social emotional learning. Some schools carve out a specified class period. That's more kind of the logistics on how they fill the class for lack of a better term. But typically it's a 20 to 30 minute section of the day that is standalone for social emotional learning. There's other activities that take place during that time as well. ASB activities take place there. Sometimes teaching of our PBSES behavior expectations can be reinforced during that time. Sometimes it can be a specified second step lesson. Sometimes it can be a character strong lesson. So it's kind of a multi-modality connection piece. I would also point out, I would be remiss not to mention that some of that time is also earmarked for students to do test makeups or maybe be excused to go meet with the teacher. Because we're finding that that is an effective block of time within the school day where a student may be able to access an adult, a teacher for some help. And it doesn't conflict with taking the bus home or after school responsibilities. So that is another tool that is being levered during some of that SEL time to improve access to maybe, like I said, test makeups or additional help, things of that nature.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So following up on second step. So if, if we hear from multiple buildings and I suspect if we ask students, they would also say it's equally ineffective. What is the mechanism for why we continue to do something that is not being perceived by our staff and our students as effective? Number one. Number two, are there students on the selection process for when we adopt something that is? This is not like a math curriculum. I wouldn't expect a sixth grader to know like, hey, what math should I be learning? But in this way, this is something that's truly almost peer-to-peer driven. I mean, it's, it's not a teacher driven. But it's a type of learning that really has to be something that they could say like, yeah, I really can engage in my end of that or I can't. And so were there students as part of this process?
I will defer that to Executive Director of TLS, Rich Melish. Yeah. So TLS provides support and partnership with student interventions to adopt the second step curriculum. Our curriculum adoption committees are staffed by teachers. So it is a group of teachers and, and staff who get together, review the available social emotional curriculum. And then made a selection of that for instruction. So that's the, the process. And we do have our adoption cycle. And then of course, teachers have supplemented that with the character strong to add to that curriculum. So in terms of the process, just wanted to speak to that.
I didn't hear you answer the question, though. Were students part of the process?
No, no. Our, our adoption teams are in our policy and in our contract are staffed by teachers. As our process, we do have the instructional materials committee reviews that. And that is parents and staff as well.
So what is part of the process for how we actually solicit feedback for when we adopt curriculum that is not universally loved?
So we, at the beginning of any adoption cycle, we do survey students, parents and staff as part of the process of adopting curriculum. Trying to remember at the time, did we, the social emotional curriculum was not replacing a previous curriculum, was it? Do you recall? Yeah, that was our first time. So we wouldn't have had a survey of, of students because we wouldn't have had a prior experience in which to build upon. So we may not have had that at that time. So in terms of soliciting feedback, we could, you know, we certainly at the cabinet and education planning committee do talk about our adoption cycle and set when we, when we want to review and, and redo an adoption.
So I, I guess what I'm getting at is this is an example of the, I think the problem that the staff sees the disconnect, right? The staff widely recognize this. They hear it from their students. And yet there's not a way for them to provide, sounds like there's no process by which they can say ways, rave the white flag and say, this isn't working what we've adopted. And so it sounds like that we need to create some sort of process, not just for second step, for any curriculum that we adopt to say, hey, you know, we thought that this was going to be good and we even piloted it in all these schools. But it's just not working. Or to say like, gosh, it's not working because it's not being implemented with fidelity. But it's just not working or to say like, gosh, it's not working because it's not being implemented with fidelity. Or somewhere, I, I don't, I mean, there's a whole bunch of whys, but to, to figure out the, the sort of, how do we get and connect that feedback loop into where our staff feels like this isn't just being pushed on them? That they actually have the ability to engage in the process and then deliver education. Cause I don't believe we have a teacher in our building who doesn't want to deliver.
Yeah.
A high quality product.
And, and I think to your point is, I think what was surprising was just the number of teachers that were like, yeah, this doesn't, doesn't work. The, and I, and so it makes me wonder about the piloting process. Like, how did this not come out? With the teachers that were piloting it, I don't understand because it wasn't like, oh, one here, one there. And it was universal amongst all three groups of middle school teachers we talked to that this was not working for them and it seemed pretty universal. So I, I do, I do think so. That's the singular issue. And then it is a secondary issue of what happens when we're two years in or we're three years in and realize, oh, you know what? In a geometry class, not teaching proofs until chapter 13 might not be a good idea. So how do, how do you go about saying, yeah, I recognize we made this decision, but in hindsight, it may not have been the best one, or there might be better options, or there might be supplemental to this that we really need to get to.
Yeah, I think the, the, the point of could we take some additional time to listen. Now, we do a second, at the end of the second year of any adoption, we do survey all the teachers who are teaching the curriculum. So we, we do a teacher survey of implementation at the end of the second year of any adoption. And that was completed with the second step and I have to work with our student intervention department to pull that. We do then share the results with IEA to make sure that they're seeing that we are getting the feedback from the teachers there. We have not regularly gone back to the students and gotten survey on, on implementation of curriculum, but with something like social emotional curriculum, I can understand the request to, to, to get more feedback from students on that. So certainly I'm taking note and will share with my colleagues involved in this curriculum, the questions that are coming out of this meeting.
Well, I was just gonna add in, I, I don't know with social emotional learning, whether there's a lot of robust curriculums out there. And so I just wonder if in the end they all pick the best that was available, but that doesn't miss necessarily make it a great curriculum. And where can we go from where we are now to something that's even better?
Yeah, um, thank you, Director Moore, Josh Alme, Deputy Superintendent. Many, many, many years ago, actually probably about four or five years ago, when I was the Executive Director of Middle Schools and also oversaw the student interventions department and we went through this curriculum adoption process. One of the criteria that we had was that we looked at research based curriculums. At, at that time, character strong was being developed there, that they were developing their SEL curriculum. We had used a, a character strong in our ASB and our leadership classes for a number of years. I had actually gone to a couple of trainings that John Norland put on at Sumner High School back before he broke off on his own to do character strong. And it was really a leadership framework, leadership curriculum. At that point, it was not a social emotional learning curriculum. They were developing that in the process. So the, the curriculum adoption team looked at research based SEL curriculums for K eight that were available and second step is what came out of that. Shortly after that, character strong had developed and completed their SEL curriculum. And at that time, the Iscoa School District started to use that as a supplementary curriculum and whatnot. But I, taking feedback from the board, I will be sure to bring this back to our student interventions team and process how we can get into deeper conversations about those SEL lessons that we run at elementary and middle school.
I do. It's a slight tangent from this point on SEL, if that's okay. I guess it's more than a slight tangent. So I guess for me and looking back at the, the history of the conversations and the, let me put this back on and the and certainly being in the most recent one, my question is really, what does a healthy feedback process look like? So do we have an example, I guess, by which the, the teachers, an example, or all staff for that matter, have a, a way to give feedback on an ongoing process into the admin of the district, let alone to the, the board? Because what seems to be the consistent message that I've received in these sessions and in others is a feeling of frustration or lack of clarity of, of how and where to do that or how to do that successfully. Or a feeling that if messaging is given that there could be, I guess at worst retaliation, at, at best, maybe no reaction. And so I, I guess what I would like to figure out or work on is what is the feedback process and how do we know or how can we give the employee base of the district a sense that their, their feedback on a myriad of topics has a place to go and is heard and is reviewed in some way?
Right. I mean, is there some sort of annual employee engagement process like there is probably in every other industry in America? And I don't know if K 12 in Washington even does that, but I think that's, it, it's really trying to get a sense on how do we, because that's why I tried to use is like this SEL was just a microcosm of the bigger picture of I think staff globally, probably even in this building, feel that there's not a connection to either mission and vision or to being able to say, hey, you could do this and I would be happier and perform better. I think that's, that's a missed opportunity is I think what we see, what we consistently heard is would be helpful. And it's not that not every answer is going to be something that is favorable to everyone. And I, that's not the point. I don't think that's the point of any of us here. But it's, it's developing that cycle of listening and learning from that I think that we've heard pretty consistently, people feel is missing. And I would say, this isn't just, this isn't just our staff. I mean, if you asked us of our parents, our parents would say the same thing. And I venture to say community members would too. And I think we got that through the input. We asked you guys to do the Center for Educational Effectiveness and do those engagement surveys last year. And that was a big driver. And then we had a lot of engagement conversations with our set plans because there was no other data to talk about.
Right.
So I don't know if things like that went to the wayside or if that could become an every other year thing, but I, I, I think just in general, we're not going to improve until we take more feedback and be open to it. Is my opinion.
Yeah, and I, I would agree. I think this, this actually would be a good time to start talking about that and looking at it because right, we, we've said numerous times that we need to reestablish trust and engagement with our staff and with our community after basically the COVID year from hell. And I think that, you know, this would, trying to figure out how to, as Sydney said, how to create that healthy feedback process would take us a long way to getting there. Okay, it is 5:50. Any other last words, Harlan?
Uh, yeah, this is going to be for Elena. So you can start walking. So I think we've heard from a lot of teachers that they appreciate the equity work that we've done. It's raised a lot of awareness. Our buildings in various times have had instances happen. And I think we've heard a lot of teachers feel helpless in, in a lot of ways to know what can they do? Like what are they legally allowed to do? What are they directed by the superintendent and the administration to do? And then how do we train them to do that? And so I think those are three big gaps that we heard from them. And again, all I heard from them was eagerness, like they believe in it. They absolutely want to do it. But they have no idea how to.
Right, because situations arise and it's like, oh, I've got all this training, but I don't know what to do with this.
Yeah. And even though they were like simple things about, you know, microaggressions or to address implicit bias and bringing up good questions and no, so.
Yeah. Yes, uh, thank you, Board. Elena Sivadasan, Executive Director of Equity. Um, that's also feedback that the Equity Department has heard. And I think that some of the background information that I would like to provide to, to all of you is that we have done a variety of trainings with staff in terms of with Dr. Caprice Hollins, right, where we're building just kind of staff skills, like their awareness and their knowledge. And then we've also just provided training for them around how to have courageous conversations, how to have those kind of hot topic or hot moments responses in the classroom. And I mean, I could stand up here and list a lot of things. I, and I think that there what I want to kind of talk to delicately is I think one of the things is, is just talking about race, talking about racism, talking about microaggressions is something that is still uncomfortable for our staff. And I acknowledge that, but I also want them to lean into it. And I think that there is sometimes a worry that it has to be perfect and it has to be done the right way. And what we're sharing with staff is that really what the students want is just to see you show up. It doesn't need to be perfect. It doesn't need to be handled a particular way. And there are lots of situations that our staff handle that is not their lived experience. That is not their background. It's not something they received training on in, in teacher school or administrator school. Uh, and that there is just something about race or cultural competency that is sort of this barrier for people to say, oh, I can still lean into this, even if this wasn't my experience. So I think some of it is just reminding our teachers that really what students want is for them to show up, right? And I think most importantly too, is the importance of having relationships with students and developing those relationships and that classroom culture, starting at the start of the school year rather than retroactively. So I think uh, in terms of that piece, I would talk about, in my opinion, I think the training's there. I think it's just something that staff need to lean into now and the superintendent, Phili and I have had question or have had conversations, right, about this staff. How are we signaling from the district office that we're giving staff permission to lean into these conversations or that we are going to stand by them when these situations happen? And so there's been, we've kind of talked about different ways to address that with our staff. And that is why there's been more. You see district wide community announcements around things that have taken place because when we signal from the district office, that also helps give staff the comfortability to know that they need to lean in. Uh, we've also talked about this with our administrators and our prince, and our principals of just the importance of them leading and helping staff lean in when they need to. A very concrete example of this is we created at the beginning of this year, and it was a required training for all teachers, a courageous conversations professional development. And a part of that training was sharing with staff that what EL 16 is, that it is the mission and vision of the district and that when situations come up, you need to lean in because that is the calling of our district. That is the mission and values of our district. This is the way that it should look or that it can happen. Um, and here's the website and all the ways that we can provide supports to this. We've also trained our, every building has a building equity lead. So we've trained them on these pieces as well to be a sort of on demand support to staff in those situations. Now, if I am getting at some of the things that we've seen pop up in the schools and staff needing support there, that's often right, a collaboration between the Equity Department and other departments within the system. And how are we kind of wrapping around each other to support some, some things that are happening in the districts. So at our, like at our middle schools, we had, we saw an increase in fighting and just some significant social emotional needs there. And so there are ways that the Equity Department came in and supported that. And then there are ways that our student interventions department needs to come in and support based on their tier one interventions, their coaches in the buildings. And then what are their, how are they explicitly training around behaviors and those pieces? I'm happy to go more specific if you all have those questions.
Okay, I think with three minutes until the meeting, I'm going to say no, but thank you very much for that.
I wanted to follow up. Okay.
No, well, I want to keep this conversation going. And the other thing that I want to do is talk about, now that we've done these three listening sessions, what are our next steps? And I think I'm going to defer that to when we discuss the work session in the meeting. So I give us a two minute break. We come back at six o'clock and we have our meeting. Yes? Yes, thank you. Okay, we're good. You can hear me? Okay, they tell me you can hear me, so we're going with that. But, yeah. Yeah, we don't need him to talk. All right, sorry. Welcome to this meeting of the Esquerra School Board on Monday, November 15th. Apologize for the short delay. We're having all kinds of creative technical issues because we think because the district admin building lost power for a little while today and things are coming back up in a wonky way. So where am I? I'm pretty sure I want to start with the pledge of allegiance. Yes, I do. Oh, sorry. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You're going to stay with us too. Okay, so let's, I'm going to try to get us back on track here. And the first thing on the agenda is already confusing because the first thing is public input. And I know I have, I'm sorry, student input. I knew what I meant. I know I have a Gibson X student here. Excuse me, are there two of you and is one on the Zoom or is it just you? Oh, okay, that makes sense. Welcome. And your name is, wow, can't read that, Halva Alcorn? Okay, what I'm going to ask you to do, please, is to come up to that microphone and give your student input. Is that way people can hear you and see you? And is your, the mic is on?
Uh, yes.
Okay, perfect.
Hello, my name is Halva Alcorn and I'm very happy to be here tonight. I'm representing the Gibson neck ASB and student body and as a small high school in a hot of big ones. It's very nice to have the time to have a voice. I was homeschooled through middle school and although I attended the and Abbey River Lake Middle School. And when I was looking into different high school options, I felt like I needed to move away from homeschooling. But I wasn't sure if I could handle the loud and overcrowded environment of a bigger one. A little while into our exploration of possibilities. My mom got an email talking about an innovative school called Gibson neck. And after looking into it, we decided it couldn't hurt to apply. I wasn't sure at the time what Gibson neck was all about or what a good fit for my learning it would be. But I was willing to give it a shot. Needless to say, after some hurdles, I made it in and I am now part of the Gibson neck class of 25. Internships are a very important part of education at Gibson. I'm taking an internship with my band teacher from Beaver Lake Middle School to learn more about musical education and how that works. I've been thinking about pursuing a teaching career for quite some time. And it is so helpful to be able to learn about what being in the classroom is like before I spend a ton of money on an education before I know if I even like teaching. We're all about being prepared for the real world and being ready to make a difference in our communities. There are so many other cool internships and projects going on at Gibson neck. There's a girl in my advisory or homeroom classroom who's working on film studies and video editing and another senior made a short film and he's continuing to do studies in that field and to progress and grow. I know of a few other students who are working on arts and graphic design and coding and all kinds of really cool stuff. Our maker spaces are some of the biggest hubs of learning and creativity from the workshop to the textile space to the 3D printing lab to the recording studio. They have all just been super key in our growth. However, our media space has remained sadly behind. As a student at Gibson neck, we have access to the full Adobe suite. We have this amazing opportunity to learn how to use this quality software. But our computers don't have the power to handle those programs efficiently. And that resource remains underutilized. One thing that our school could really benefit from is a tech update to enhance creativity and the quality of our students' work and to help us learn and practice practical skills. I've been so grateful to have the opportunity to attend Gibson and to represent us as a school within and without our environment. And I'm so grateful for all of the opportunities it has opened up to me. My first day, I was struck by how inclusive it was. There were so many different people and our conversations were always so meaningful and respectful. And I realized at Gibson neck, we are really learning to grow up as kind, community building adults. We're learning how to design a world that we want to live in. Thank you for helping us have such a unique and progressive school.
Thank you very much. It is really nice to hear somebody that is so excited about their school. And we are very proud of Gibson neck as the board that was in place when it came online. And so it's really nice to hear from a student that it's working the way we thought it would. Please know that you are welcome to stay for as much of the meeting as you can. And if you would like to give input or ask questions at any point during the meeting, just raise your hand and I probably won't see you, but she will and she'll nudge me and say, student wants to talk. So I say you're welcome to do that.
Thank you.
And okay, public input. I know I have public input from the room and I don't have too many people on the Zoom, so we'll see how that goes. Okay, so the rules of public input are, this is input for items not on the board agenda. So if you have input into something we're going to be discussing later, please hold that thought. As a rule, the board does not respond to public input. Public input goes for two minutes and has a timer. She's not afraid to use it. Please clearly state your name and school attendance area. And know that the board neither endorses nor censors any opinions expressed in public input. Please keep all comments civil and respectful. And with that, I have Gary Jensen in the room. Yes?
Good evening, board. And Superintendent Thiele, thank you for your service to our district. It's great to be here with you tonight. I'm Gary Jensen. I have a, I just had a 2020 graduate from Biscayne High and I have four grandchildren attending the district south. Can you hear me okay? As we observe the current cultural and political climate around us, devolve into separate camps of very different philosophies and the subsequent desire to demonize and cancel each other out. I think it's a good time for us as a community and a school district to reflect on what we can do to mitigate this negative unhealthy trend. All of us value our constitutional first amendment rights, freedom of speech. As a part of this, we often miss the ability to listen to opposing views. And even more importantly, the ability to respect those that we disagree with. That is sorely lacking in today's environment. The state of our political discourse is bleeding over into every part of our society. This is we watch media and government figures in a constant battle to discredit and belittle those that they disagree with. It sets a very bad example to our children who are watching and observing. I think we as a community and school district should examine what we can do to reverse this trend and restore a more welcoming, free exchange of ideas in our schools and our community. It would create a much healthier environment for our kids to grow and learn in, and it would help them create better analytical skills, being able to take in and absorb differing opinions without an instant bias. So this evening I would challenge the board to seek to find ways to expound and implement this concept of learning to value and accept differing points of view. I think it could begin with ensuring that we have non-threatening, non-biased environments in our classrooms that foster a healthy dialogue of all points of view. Instilling our students with this ability would be a good first step in helping us return to a healthier cultural climate. And I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much for your input. Do I have? Oh, I'm sorry. I was just about to say, do I have any input on the Zoom? You threw me there. And I can't read it. Okay. I still can't read the first one. Oh. Miss Nakapau. I'm going to say that wrong. Miss Nakapau. You're going to have to, once he unmute you, you're going to have to correct my pronunciation. I'm sorry. It was very hard to read.
Oh, no, it's totally fine. It's, my name is Rhiann Nakapau. I am one of the music teachers at Briarwood Elementary. And I just wanted to give like a very public kudos to all of the staff last week. I don't know if many people heard about like the fiasco that happened on Tuesday. But it was insane to be, you know, told that everything was going to be normal. And then at nine AM, we get the call that school is canceled when we have kids already outside of the building and buses on their way. And I just wanted to give a public like shout out to my coworkers and our admin and custodians and paras just doing an amazing job. We successfully got all of the kids except one in the two hours, got them back home. And then the other student just eventually got picked up, but it was huge and it just showed really good teamwork and I just wanted that to be noted. Yeah, that's all.
Okay, thank you very much for that. I appreciate it. We always appreciate it when people say something nice. And we realize that having a power outage or a snow event right after kids get dropped off or right before you're trying to send them home is like the worst possible timing. And we also appreciate everything that everybody did to make that run smoothly. I know it was not easy.
And sorry, I just want to throw in one more thing. One thing that would have been super helpful was if things could have been also put on the district page. There was no communication out to families that way because a lot of them were like, well, we didn't say anything on the district page. And I said, I know we just got the call. So if there's more transparency available for things like that, that would be super helpful, especially since we're out of internet and phones.
Okay, thank you very much for that. I can see that that would be helpful. Another one I can't pronounce. Mary Duratus? Okay, they need to unmute you.
Yeah, you said that right. Thank you. Hi, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. Yeah, I'm Mary Duratus and I live in the district. I wanted to point out that the district's meeting minutes, which are on your website, have headings with the time of day notations. But when you watch the meetings on YouTube, that shows time in meeting. And so do the summary paragraphs on your website. And so I'm wondering if from now on, if you'll match the minutes themselves to the time in meeting notations as they show on, on those two instances. One other thing is related to this is that a lot of videos on YouTube have transcripts available. It's, you can access them using the three little dots at the bottom right of the screen. And I'm wondering if you will make those transcripts available on YouTube recordings as well. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for your input. Both of those things are way above my pay grade, but we did get the email and I am sure that that has been passed on to people who know how to do these things.
Thank you.
Okay, was there any other public input from the Zoom, from the room? Okay, that brings us to approval of the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a meeting management tool whereby the board is able to pass multiple items with one motion. Consent agenda items have all been reviewed by the board prior to the meeting. And any board member may review an item from the consent agenda and place it on the regular agenda for discussion. Do I have a motion? Yes.
I move the consent agenda to be approved as presented.
Go have a second.
No, because I have a board member that would like to pull enough, but doesn't want to say so. GP five?
Wait, what?
Like to pull GP five off the consent agenda.
GP five? GP five is not on consent.
Regular agenda.
Sorry, that's I'm was speaking for somebody and trying to see without my glasses or with my glasses.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm just confused now.
Never mind. Never mind.
There we go. We got our second.
I don't know how it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Yeah, and oops, I'm sorry. Something just went wonky. Okay. Are there any changes to the regular agenda?
There are none.
Okay, we've made it through that. Okay, work, study, review. The board actually started a little bit early today and had two work studies. One was a meeting with the Samamish, members of the Samamish Police Force, as well as the mayor and city manager of Samamish. And they basically wanted to talk to us about the SRO program and their view of its effectiveness and importance. We then did a board review of the three teacher learning, teacher listening sessions that we held. Two of them way back in early 2020 and the last one last month. And the subjects of those teacher listening sessions were equity, social emotional learning, and basically other feedback for the board, what we could do better. We reviewed some of the issues that were raised at those sessions. I would actually like to have a little more conversation on that as far as where we go from here. But before we do that, let me throw it to the board and see if there were any specific comments you wanted to raise about our conversation. Sydney.
So the, the first conversation with Samamish Police Department, I think that was good. I appreciate them wanting to come and share the program, how it's working, the value of that. So I think that was helpful. I, it does sort of for me beg the question of our next actual connection with the City of Samamish Council. And so I don't know if we have scheduled that, but I would say it felt a little disjointed for me, given we haven't had maybe the broader, broader conversation about the number of connection points we have with the City of Samamish. So I don't know if we've thought about that scheduling, but I would love to.
Yeah, I have thought about it. I was, I tried to reach out to Mayor Moran earlier this year and was told that they just had a lot on their plate and linking with the ISD wasn't in the cards for the foreseeable future. I think now that we have gotten, I was sort of waiting to get through the entire election cycle. They are going to have a number of new council people seated because there were people who didn't run. And so I thought, I thought I would wait for the election to be certified and then reach out again. I don't know if it will be Mayor Moran or if they will change their mayor because they may, they probably do that like we do that, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. But in any case, that's all a long-winded way of saying that I think in December, I will reach out to the Samamish City Council and say that once again, ISD would like a linkage with them in the early part of the year. And can we schedule that? Because I think we're long overdue to have done it. I think certainly with respect to our construction project that fronts Samamish streets, there's a lot of misconceptions about that project. And I think there's just a number of topics that would be good for us to discuss with them. So, so no, we haven't scheduled it and yes, it's on my agenda. Marnie.
Well, first I want to go back to, I am sorry that I missed most of the conversation. I went, checked my phone. It did say that our meeting started at five. So if it's not on my calendar, I'm not there. So I do apologize. But I, as I walked in, it was, I really still want to know what did I miss? Because it felt like a completely different conversation of what I was expecting. There was a tension in the room that I still don't understand. So I look forward to having an opportunity of hearing what some of that was. I know towards the end, Dr. Gallinger mentioned something about a current SRO and attendance. And the answer from that person was in conflict from the data that we have. So I do, I do want to say I have supported the SRO program. Our Director of Safety and Security is a former SRO in our district, which is really most of what I know is from Mr. Montalvo. And because I experienced him as the SRO down in the South End for years. And so I think it is about relationships and it's about being there. And so I think that was the part of the conversation that I kind of walked in on that I need to specify if we do, you know, we haven't made a decision yet. If we do continue with an SRO in an area, I think there has to be that level of commitment to that position.
Yeah, and I think to be clear, there, there might have been some misunderstanding, given that it was actually, you know, the City of Issaquah that held those listening sessions around the SRO program and the fact that we have talked about potentially replacing SROs with SSOs. But I think they thought we were in a different place on that decision-making track that we, than we are. And I tried to explain that, you know, it was actually the, the police forces in the other two jurisdictions that had said, hey, we cannot provide you with an SRO. And hence, we moved to a different model, but that we had not made any kind of decision with respect to the City of Samamish and Skyline High School. So I, I think there might have been a slight disconnect with where they thought we were and where we are. That's the only kind of, that's all I can say.
Well, and so from my perspective, it is a matter of what does this partnership look like?
Sure.
And is it being reciprocated? Because I would say that the number of days that I've seen that the current SRO has missed does not equal the number that that person said and certainly doesn't equal the number of what I would consider a partnership. Because that's already, it's already almost 10% of the entire school year. And we're not even halfway through the school year.
I'm sorry, Harlan, did you have something?
Mine's more process feedback. Like, my request would be that this board doesn't host meetings with departments of other legislative bodies. And that's what I've kind of felt like tonight was. So I think it would have been totally appropriate for them to come up and give public input. But this felt very weird. Like, we have linkages with city councils. We have linkages with foundation boards. We don't generally have linkages with a department of a city. And I certainly wouldn't expect that our elementary education department is gonna go have a linkage with the City of Issaquah Council. And that's what it felt like tonight. So I felt a little unprepared and surprised by what it was. So my humble request would be going forward that this is really a council to board conversation. Because that's what our partnership is, just to be clear. Our partnership is with the City of Samamish, not with Samamish Police Chief. Am I correct in that?
Yeah.
So this, this felt very, and I think that's where it kind of started to go sideways. Because then I think they came out from a very personal level on what they were assuming, we all thought. And I'll give the disclaimer, like, I'm pro SRO. And I've said it publicly here that I want you guys to have a conversation with the Skyline community before you make any decisions. I will also say, however, walking away from that conversation, I am much less pro SRO after that conversation because I have serious competence and accountability concerns with what I heard tonight.
Yeah, and, and I would agree with you on the fact that we would not normally have a linkage like that. The fact is that the police chief reached out to me multiple times and asked to have time in front of the board. And I'm a nice person. I said yes. I, but I take your point that it was probably a better conversation to have with the city council. It was in fact why I asked, why I copied the mayor and the city manager on the final meeting email because I didn't, you know, I didn't want it to seem like, oh, they're just going rogue without you. But yeah.
It would. It's just like if it's leader to leader, if, I think they would share our concerns if there's been 52 school days and double-digit absences. I think they would understand our conversation and our point about what a partnership looks like. And I don't think they missed an opportunity for that. And I worry that this will further whatever side conversation that clearly brought this on. That's all.
Okay, fair enough.
President Weaver, if I, if I could just add, I, I think it'll be important as a follow-up for me to reach out to the city manager. Because I, I agree with what Director Gallinger is saying. And, and you and I actually discussed this in, in the planning, or as you were responding, that that's why you included the city manager, it's why you included the mayor. Because historically, just as an example, when the last time you had an SRO conversation, it was with the city council. And the, the police chief was there, but it was the school board to the city council, the superintendent there, the city manager there, the police chief there. But it is a conversation among the elected. You all run the organizations from your elected positions. So I, I do feel compelled, I need to, to reach out to the city manager because some of the information that I heard tonight doesn't align with our, our lived experience, if you will, over the past year. Having said that, I do want to acknowledge that we've had a good working relationship historically with our SRO programs. And so, you know, nobody wants to just throw an idea out or throw a program out. It, it requires us to take the time to have the conversations and to be able to be honest with one another. And frankly, at some of these, I feel like are kind of at a personnel level. And I think are, are better suited for a direct conversation between me, the city manager. And then it may become a conversation between the councils and the boards and, and the like. And so that's where we, we really need to start. And I'm, I'm, the, the good news is we just had a connection with the City of Samamish. And we've had some struggles doing that recently. And I understand, you know, there's been an election and all kinds of things going on. But now hopefully this signals an opportunity for us to get back and have a more consistent exchange with our, the, the city that provides us the most students of any municipality in our, in the Issaquah school system. Thank you.
Okay. Let's go back to the teacher listening sessions. Because I felt, I felt we got a lot of information out of that. You know, Sydney brought up the question about what does a healthy feedback process look like? We, we talked briefly with Elena at the end about we've provided a certain amount of equity training and what are the next steps to, to help teachers to feel comfort, comfortable in implementing the equity and basically having the difficult conversations when a situation arises that they're uncomfortable with. And we talked quite a bit about social emotional learning curriculum. And where I would like to go at this point is, okay, we've had these conversations, we've gotten this feedback, we've had some interesting discussions. Now what? What are our next steps? Do we want to have more conversations? Do we want to circle back somehow? What are your thoughts?
Well, just a reminder, we have three elementary listening sessions scheduled.
That's true.
So we've only heard from, obtained from our secondary staff. So we have three more scheduled in January, February.
Right, but, but to that point of, you know, we, we, we did these so that we could hear from people. But once, once we have heard from them, we need a way to be able to share back with them what we got out of it and/or what other steps we might take if there was something we got from it that was in a direction that we were looking for something to change.
Sydney.
Yeah, I guess along that lines, it may be, maybe what would prepare us to do that feedback part would be, at least out of the ones we've had to date, what are the prioritized items that we, we think we, we either want to work on as a board or wanna work with admin to be implemented? I think if we can get down to what are some of the top few we think rose to the top? And then at least communicate that back, hey, we did these three. The top ones that we think were important are this. And maybe what is the timeline that we might work, work on some of those items? I know for me, it's interesting, right? I think what, the biggest thing I took away from it is the want of to have a regular way to, to communicate. And so I think that's gonna take some, some discussion to figure out what that looks like. Because it could be, we just keep scheduling these meetings and we have them. It could mean, you know, exploring some sort of employee engagement type vehicle like Harlan mentioned. But I think if we could, we could get to that, which is, hey, in talking to secondary, these are some of the top items we took away. And here's what we think is next. I think that would be the best because I did hear, and maybe it was in the last session we did, but one of the pieces of feedback was, it would be great just to understand what you heard and what's gonna happen with it. So I think if we, that would be kind of the first order of business, I think.
Okay. Anybody else or any other comments? Yeah, it's, I had sort of blanked in my mind that we still had elementary sessions to go. I don't know why. And, you know, and that's interesting because, you know, assuming that we stay with the same format and the same topics, I'm going to be interested in what we hear that's similar and what we hear that's different. I think, and I'm just spitballing here. I think the thoughts around equity might be somewhat more similar. I think social emotional learning is going to be different because I think it works so much better at the elementary level. And, you know, what they want from the board is anyone's guess. But, yeah, so, okay, so we still do have elementary and yeah, it might be better to go through the whole cycle. I don't know. Marnie.
So, um, yeah, I, I definitely think that would be interesting. One of my interests is, you know, when we asked the question, how has the equity work of the board and district influenced you and your practices as an educator? Some of the comments came back that they didn't realize that this, that there was any equity work of the board. Like that, that it was really driven from the top. That, 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 that's something that we actually started with the board. We put in place practices. We, we were doing our own learning and, and, and were supportive of the work that TLC, you know, the teaching and learning staff was doing. And so I just thought that was really interesting, like, how have we not communicated what that means? And I think so at some point, especially given a lot of the input we had, it would be good for us to really, I don't know, have, have a way of communicating what, what do we consider equity work? I think we have it in our statement, what we envision that to be as to what a lot of people in the public might hear when they hear that. And the same with our teaching staff, like, do they realize that, that actually, when we're asking this, the work of the board or the equity work of the board reply is, is in response to EL 16 that we've implemented? I mean, these conversations, this conversation happened after that had been put in place. And so I'm curious because we live and breathe our policies, no one else does. And, yeah, as far as the teachers, they don't live their day-to-day life thinking. But how is the, how am I helping the district implement its policy, right? So how do we really get to them that this is all our work? And that they're just the ones that are doing the kind of the outward representation of that work?
Sydney.
I think just to build on, on what Marnie just said, I think it would be really helpful to do a where are we now? Right, so to even ground people in the history, but where are we now and what do we think is next as far as the equity work? Because if you just look at change in staff, I would imagine there's quite a few people who weren't here for when that work was done and didn't know that that's where it started. Not just that there's some issue with communication. I think there's a fair enough amount of change that it would, it would be good to just take this as a moment to say, one of the things we learned out of the prioritization is there wasn't a large amount of awareness of the kind of genesis and the progress in the equity space and what we think is next. So I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, and it's interesting because, you know, we did position these as learning session, a listening session. So the board was there to listen, not to say, oh, no, wait, we have a policy. You know, the, the whole timing is interesting. I mean, I will say, to be fair, the district did start its cultural competency training before we implemented our policy. Now, having said that, that policy was what, two years in the making? So a lot of things were going on simultaneously. From a pride of authorship standpoint, I don't care who gets the credit. But, but it does sort of surprise me because, and again, to be fair to the district, when things go out around equity, our policy gets quoted and referenced all the time. So it's out there. Now, again, are teachers living and breathing the work we do? Of course not. They, they have way more. They have way more important, numerous other things to be doing. But, yeah, it's an interesting observation. Anne.
Well, and we have to realize too, these were optional voluntary sessions. So we actually only heard from a small set of the staff. And it's not like I'm asking that we're going to mandatory, people have to come and have sessions with us. But it certainly was people that wanted to come and share something. And for some, it was more about the equity. For some, it could have been about the PBSES. For some, they just wanted to come and see us, you know? So we get a different perspective based on what that person thought they were coming to share.
Well, and to be fair, at least one of the meetings, and I don't remember which one, there were like eight different mentee bubbles saying, I'm here because I thought the meeting was mandatory. Otherwise, I would not have bothered with you. But, yeah, that's a good point. I'm sorry, Harlan, did you have something?
So I just, you know, I think that we should, my recommendation, we wait till we hear the next three before we sort of take the sort of what's the next step. But I agree that I think we need to have some sort of response to formulate, hey, here's what we all heard. And I understand that there's selection bias, right? There's no question that there's selection bias in who shows up to what point you just made, Anne. But no different than when whoever fills out, you know, employee engagement surveys, there's a selection bias there too. I mean, that's, we're going to have that no matter what we do. I think what we have done was look at what are the themes we see across the district that are worth bringing up? And, you know, and these are consistent with what we hear and have heard. This isn't something like new, like nothing that we've heard. It's something that was like new and surprising. It should be more fuel for us to be like, okay, so we actually need to take action on this and what that action looks like is perfectly a repeat topic.
Yeah, agreed. Okay.
Oh, I was going to say, and just a final note to that, I think some specificity around what I heard very much with the equity work was, we were doing a good job at helping teachers move through what's happening in their classroom and their maybe, you know, unintentional bias that might be feeding into that. And that they're being much more aware of that. And what it sounds to me like what they need help with now is, what do I do when students are interacting with each other and things come up? Whether it's racial insensitivity, whether it's an insensitivity towards somebody's disability or their sexual orientation? How do I deal with the real-life implications of things happening in my classroom? And I think that's, to me, the tangible thing. It will be interesting, because I don't know if they'll have that same type of comment in elementary school.
Yeah, that will be interesting. Okay. Anything else? All right. Moving on to the general conversation of superintendent updates. I think we left that open-ended for you to report out on whatever you wanted to report out.
I do have some things that I want to share and a few more when I get to work in progress. But on the update side, I thought it would be good for me to start with the fact that last week, we ran our five to 11-year-old vaccination clinics here in this building. And by all measures, that was a huge success. Thank you to our partner, Costco Pharmacy, and to all of our organizers and the volunteers. I mean, we had PTSA volunteers, we had school directors volunteering, we had ISF folks volunteering, we had the ISF providing money for goodie bags for the students, a big chunk of staff here, working to organize and make it a successful event. By the end of the third day last Friday, the clinic had successfully vaccinated 1,673 individual students for their first dose of the COVID vaccine. That's a big number. And we're hearing that a lot of the clinics were struggling around us to actually keep themselves staffed and everything. So we feel really good about that fact. And those students were also automatically scheduled to receive their second dose in early December. So we're very encouraged that we will have thousands of ISD students that will be fully vaccinated by the time for the holidays. We'll also be running the clinic this coming Saturday, November 20th. We'll be vaccinating another 500, five to 11-year-old students. So, yeah, again, the clinic was a wonderful collaboration among our operations department, our equity department, our special services department, safety and security, our elementary education department. I don't want to leave anybody out, but they all came together and created, you know, we were a little nervous, I'm not going to lie. It's one thing to bring our staff in to be vaccinated. It's another thing to bring in a 17-year-old to be vaccinated. But when you start talking five-year-olds, that gets people's attention. And
They were troopers.
They, I was so proud of the kids and the families. And I have to say, there was a lot of joy out there. And it just, a lot of compliments from people about how well-run it was and everything. And again, kudos to everybody. That doesn't happen by accident. There was a lot of preparation that went into that. And so we're excited about the opportunity to do more students. We're excited about the second dose. And I'm just thankful, as I've said many times, that we're a community that leans into this mitigation effort. And I've just got some more to share about how well it went. I also wanted people to know some additional ways that our equity department supported some of our students and families. And President Weaver was in a meeting with me last week with our PTSA council. And the question came up, because we, you know, we had just put the message out the day before, 1,600 appointments filled in 25 minutes. Costco decided they could go get another 700 doses. That filled in 25 minutes. And we had a question about, from an equity standpoint, if we had done anything to help and to reach out. And, you know, we ended up putting that in the second message that we sent out. I'd sent out two messages. The second one, we did acknowledge that. But I want the community and the board to know, we did it on the front end as well. This is, I don't know if I'm just making excuses for myself, but our equity work is becoming so much a part of what we do, we didn't communicate about it, we just did it. And so what do I mean? What did we do? Well, we reached out and created some training and support time with families where English was not their primary language in order to help them better use and understand the appointment scheduling system. You can imagine trying to desperately get your child a vaccination appointment and you don't really understand the language. So our team in the equity department, they knew, they know who these families are. We work closely with them. They reached out in advance to them, much like we do with the student registration system. And made it possible for them to be able to access the clinic as well. We set up transportation options for families that might struggle getting to our building for their child's appointment. We worked with our special services department to identify and reach out to some families that may have needed some special accommodations in order to get some of our most vulnerable five to 11-year-old population vaccinated. So some of our self-contained students and the like. And that was specifically the question we got too. And the answer was yes, we did that.
You also had some people coming in with the families who were translating for them.
We, yes, we offered appointments to families that had a child. Also, we reached out to some families who we knew the child had high-risk medical situations. And as you just pointed out, we made sure that we had interpreters available through the registration process, but also in the clinics themselves. So I just want you to know that your equity department, it's got its tentacles into just about everything we do as a system. And I just think this is a great area. And again, when you combine that with our safety and security folks and our elementary ed and all of these folks working together, very successful, and we can be very proud of how we reached out to our entire community to help in this ongoing effort. The other thing I wanted to talk about was our ongoing recovery efforts and how we are now in a place where we are getting some good data, both on the academic side and the social emotional wellbeing side. So as we are nearly one-third of the way into the current school year, we're making good progress on our recovery efforts. Teachers, administrators, and all other support staff have consistently been reinforcing our behavioral expectations. And we are experiencing improved student behaviors as they become re-acclimated to in-person schooling with all the routines and expectations that go along with being in school. You know, we knew this, but was going to happen when we came back after a long absence and keeping about half of our students didn't attend school in person last year. And, you know, you kind of get out of the routine, out of the practice. And so some of the kids came back and they hadn't practiced those behavioral expectations. You know, I think we all, at least I'll speak from my own family. I know my mom was real big when I was a child of raising me, of being conscious of the environment I was in and saying, Ron, there are some things you can say in the house, and there are some things that you don't say out there in society. And just kind of helping to reinforce what is appropriate behaviors. And we all know that we have to have appropriate behaviors in school. And I'm just really pleased at the staff. They've just been consistent in reinforcing those. And we're seeing the student behaviors are improving. And so we're very thankful for that. I know that I have previously mentioned the behavioral screeners that we have been implement, that we have implemented. So now our counselors and other staff are following up with students to help them with whatever supports they might need in order to be successful in school and frankly, in life. So as you know, we do the screeners, the BZ and the other screeners. And we learn about the students and then we're able to do some follow-up and support them. That's all on the social emotional side. Our sixth, eighth, 10th, and 12th grade students have also taken the Healthy Youth Survey, which will also provide the system, not individual student, but system data, with that important data. We typically will see the results back in the early spring, usually in the March timeframe. The data also helps us better understand issues impacting our students and how we might address those issues as a school system. Again, that, we don't have individually identifiable data, but we certainly see themes. And I know this board is very familiar with the Healthy Youth Survey and how it's been used to inform some programming in the past and going forward. Over the past couple of weeks, we've also released our first round of elementary iReady data. So our teachers and parents are getting some baseline data to better understand the work that needs to be done at the individual student level as we move forward. Executive Director of TLS, Rich Melish, and his team have also provided opportunities, including parent information nights on how to read and interpret the iReady scores, because it's kind of a new thing for us. But it has an increased importance in this return-to-school era, pandemic era that we live in. Students have also completed the first-ever fall administration of the state-mandated Smarter Balance assessments. We're just starting to review and discuss this data, and it will be shared with staff and families in the coming weeks as well. This too will be good baseline data, and there will be a spring SBA administered as well. So there's going to be more than a normal amount of assessments this year. And we do quite a bit of assessing anyway. But, you know, we talk a lot about being a data-driven system, and we need to have that data in order to inform our decision-making. Another important data set that is coming up or has come up at the high school level, our class grades are also coming out. High schools have already had their first quarter grades after the 45-day point and sent out DNF notifications, so students can work on grade improvements before the final semester grades, those that end up on the transcript for the first semester, which ends in late January. Elementary and middle schools will have their first trimester grades will be coming out in early December as that trimester ends at the end of next week. And then, of course, our special services recovery efforts, we've talked a lot about them here, we did a work-study on that. Those are ongoing and making good progress. Hundreds of IEP recovery meetings have been held. Individual recovery plans have been put into place. And many students who receive specialized instruction have already begun work on their recovery goals. So we are, you know, you think back to August, late August, when we first started talking about 1,650 special IEP meetings. Each one results in a plan, and then how that plan has to be implemented. And oh, by the way, it has to happen outside of the regular school day. Just a lot of stuff going on there. And it's happening, and kids are getting the services. And this all makes me, you know, I'd love to tell you that that data all came back and showed, oh, there was no learning loss as a result of remote learning or anything. That would be a lie. The data that we have looked at does not look like traditional Isaguas School District data. We are seeing way larger numbers of students not meeting standard than we would historically expect from our system. We do not have comparison data with any other district, so we only have ourselves to look at. But at the end of the day, I'm not surprised by that. I have spoke passionately about the importance of in-person learning. I just, I believe it's the most effective modality that we can teach and learn in. And so I'm not surprised that we're seeing it, but I'm glad we're getting the data. It's confirming some of our concerns, but it's helping us plan for a quicker and better recovery of our students, both socially, emotionally, and from the standpoint of their academics as well. And so we really do appreciate everybody's efforts. The teachers are working hard to get these assessments done. And then the work for us really begins as we do the analysis of the assessments and make the determination about how to take that data and turn it into positive recovery efforts for our students. So I'm happy to see that work all moving forward. I did want to talk a little bit too about how we are staying open as effectively as we are, because our COVID numbers remain very low in the ISD. Last week, which was only a four-day week, saw our second lowest numbers of COVID cases within our system since the first four-day week back in late August, early September. Last week, we had only 16 reported cases across our entire system. And anybody who wants to track this, I encourage you to go to our data dashboard, our COVID dashboard. We have lots of good data there, and you can see seven-day averages are. It is critical to note that we continue to not see any spread of COVID within our schools. So even when we find and detect a case of COVID in the schools through our contact tracing, and we are not seeing that there is a spread as a result of that. This is, in my mind, evidence that our mitigation efforts continue to work, and we are helping to keep our students and staff healthy and safe. Most importantly, our classroom and schools open to in-person teaching and learning. Again, I just want to reiterate what I've said countless times. I believe the most important thing we can do as a system to address the social, emotional, and academic needs of our students is holding in-person schooling with as many normal-type supports and activities for our students as we have traditionally done. As our students and families once again count on us to be open and follow our normal calendar and routines, we see and feel the recovery happening within our community. We still must remain vigilant in our efforts to protect our students and selves from the pandemic and the virus. And I'm so thankful to everyone on staff and in the community for partnering with us on our COVID mitigation efforts. Thank you. It is critical. And with our test-of-state program and our symptomatic rapid testing, we are not seeing large numbers of students have to be quarantined, which is just awesome. And we are very optimistic that as our younger students now become fully vaccinated, even less of that will happen. So we're excited by all of these developments. I also want to give thanks to all of our substitute or guest teachers, all of our non-classroom assigned certificated staff, administrators, and teachers who gave up planning time to help us make sure classes were covered this past Friday, so we could remain open and productively serving our students. Thank you also to our HR staff too, for the good work that they did to make sure we had classes and support positions covered across the district. I know there was a big concern, especially as some districts around us announced closure, because they didn't believe they were going to have enough staff. My team kept reassuring me, we were going to be okay, even while we were all preparing ourselves to go out and teach first grade or whatever, wherever we were going to get placed. Actually, I said I was willing to do anything, just don't make me teach kindergarten, because they scare me. But at the end of the day, we did have, and this has been true all year, our teachers on special assignments have been covering classes, people have given up their planning periods, administrators have been serving in the roles of paras and food service workers and whatever. People have just kind of stepped up to do what needs to be done, because again, the most important thing we can do, I believe, is be open, be there for our community. And again, Friday was a proud day for me, because I was really happy our system was open. Our, we've got ongoing work on our levy development committee. We are continuing to gather volunteers for the levy development committee. We still have a few open slots, but staff are working with principals and some community members to fill our remaining spots. The committee is slated to start its work on December 2nd. We pre-scheduled five dates, but it'll take whatever time is needed to get a recommendation to me so that I can in turn, uh, work on that recommendation and bring it forward to the board for your consideration at a future date. So those were the things that I just wanted to update us on. And I've got a couple more things that I'll talk about and works in progress. But, but overall, I'm feeling, you know, really good that we are over 50 days into the school year. Haven't knock wood, had to close a classroom, certainly haven't had to close a school for any COVID reasons. Had to close a few for power outages, but you know, that's living in the Northwest. That can happen, but, but overall feeling really good about the work that's happening. And I guess the last thing I would say, I'm feeling really good that less and less I'm having to talk about epidemiology and all of that, and I'm having more and more conversations about academic assessments. And how are we strategizing to get back to the gains that we believe our students can make in that academic setting? And so that's, that's very encouraging to me. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I see Sydney has a question.
Yep, I have, I have a couple. First is back to the vaccination clinic, which is amazing. My question is demand. So I know you said you're, there's another one for another 500. Did that fill up? Do we think?
Oh, yeah.
There's demand for more beyond that?
Yes and yes. That we, we are full with the doses that we have, I believe 2,300. We are open to getting more doses. You know, it just, it's really a matter of our partners getting them. I do think Director Mullings, that if it plays like out like it did last time, I think that, that more availability will be made out in the community. And so maybe less demand will be put on the system. I, I, I just, you know, that's how I watched it happen before. If you recall, if you were like me and you were very anxious to get vaccinated, you scrambled. People were driving to Eastern Washington and everything. And then within a few weeks of that, you could have walked right into the safe way here by my apartment and gotten a vaccine. So hopefully that will happen as supply comes out. I don't know, Dr. Gallager, you look like you might have some thoughts on that.
Yeah, I think it's a slightly different, that they really want to go with a trusted source when it comes to their children. So I don't think they're willing to drive all over to do that, nor to Nescau walk up to a pharmacy. Like you would have been willing to maybe.
Sure, as an adult, yeah. Well, if we're that trusted source, that makes me feel really good. And so we'll continue to try to develop that. And, um, you know, like I say, it, we've, we've proven we can do it. And, you know, we did think that maybe one of the things that would be different this time was that more, more people would want to go to like their pediatrician. But at least initially, it looks like they're, they're happy coming here too.
That would require Allegro to actually offer the vaccine.
Well, I, I don't know anything about that. I just know what we can do. Yeah.
I will say that, and I mean, I was only here for maybe half of it, but it seemed like families were very happy to be here. They were comfortable here. You know, that the families could go in with the, first off, I gotta say, the Costco pharmacists were amazing to a person. They each had their own style, but they were all very nurturing and very, you know, sit right down here. Here's what we're going to do. They had their own systems to distract the kids. So they were awesome. But, um, you know, we had a lot of things in place. We had all the goodies and the lollipops. We had the separate rooms for kids who were really antsy. We had the movies going up everywhere. So we had a lot of things you're not going to get at your local Rite Aid. And I think, you know, I think it would be worth doing again if we think there is still demand in the community to do it. And I know it's a lot of work for your staff. Dave Montalvo was here the whole time. Martin was here the whole time. I know these, these guys, Elena was here. I know these guys are putting in a lot hours, but I, I just think it was such a big deal for the community. I'm sorry, Marnie.
Trying to do too many things at once. I want to take a sip of my drink. So I had a question around, do we know who is accessing? Cause that was one of the things that came from public health was they were hoping that a lot of the school-based vaccinations would be available for students who don't have, maybe have a pediatrician that they can go to or may not have access to transportation to get to, um, you know, a place that has, you know, a Rite Aid or, or the pharmacy, uh, local pharmacy. So I don't know if we're, if we know how many of our students, if there, if there's still room for that specific outreach.
Well, we, we, as I, as I had said, we did that outreach and, and we have, yeah, we did schedule. I mean, we specifically reached out to families, just like what you're describing, Director Meraldo, and made sure that they had access and would come in. And we've set time aside on the Saturday as well, where we are actually driving buses out to help. So I think the state or the Keegan County Public Health was probably smart in assuming that districts like this, Quas School District, we're going to do just that thing. Now, we weren't able to meet all the demand for sure, given that we have, what, 10,000 kids that age? And we've only, you know, will have administered, you know, 2,300 shots. But, um, you know, okay, 8,200. Okay, good. So yeah, we've, we've done about a quarter of them here and, uh, but we'll continue those types of outreaches as well. One of the things too, I was just really happy that many people in our community had never been to this facility. And this is.
I can speak to that.
This is their facility and I'm glad they got to use it.
We were in this room directing the kids through the lollipop and the pharmacist who gave the shot. And everybody kept trying to come in the side door.
Oh, yeah.
Cause there were, we, we had it open because it was so warm.
Oh.
And so they saw the light and they kept trying to come in. No, 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 all the way around to the other side. So clearly people have never been here.
No.
Cause they didn't know where the front door was.
See, I thought you were going to go to a different place because we also had them looping around like this and they were.
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, somebody important meets here.
It actually was funny because there were a number of parents and even some staff who came through and, and looked at our names and then came over and recognized either Suzanne or.
This is where.
Appreciative.
Yeah.
They were nice.
Hey, it's their facility. I'm just glad that we were able to use it. Sydney, did you, did I miss a question from you?
Yeah, I have one more divergent from that topic. It's, uh, food service. So I, I know that we started the year with concerns and real shortages with being able to serve cold lunch at a number of schools. I just didn't know how, like, what was the current state of affair in food service? And have we, I guess, i- if it's better now, have we sent an updated message? Cause at first we were like, hey, send your kids with their lunch. So I, I'm still packing lunch every day, so I'm, I'm hoping to get out of this.
I see, I see Mr. Turney has some, some thoughts on that. Yes, Martin?
Martin Turney, Executive Director of Finance. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Is that you? A little far away. So yeah, Martin Turney, Executive Director of Finance and Support Services. We are still generally in the same area. We've had to switch some schools back to the, to the kit from time to time. But we are seeing glimmers of hope and we're getting some staff hired. So hope is on the way. I think we're getting closer to having all of our buildings up as they should be.
One of the things, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Turney. Some ca- cases, in a couple of cases, we had to switch over to the kits because of staffing issues. We literally only had one staff member. So we didn't have like multiple people who could be preparing the various lunch lines. Other places, um, we've been impacted by supply chain issues. And now I will say, and I believe, um, our Director of Food Service, Brian Olson, he, you know, his hair is getting a lot grayer because it's kind of a new adventure every day in terms of what you're going to get. And people like Brian who do this for large institutions, they live by a schedule and by, you know, we know that the tater tots from this supplier come on this day in this amount. And that, that consistency just doesn't exist for them right now. And if I've heard this correctly, it's like, we think we're getting something and something else shows up. And it's kind of, you're just getting what you can get from the supply chains right now.
That's absolutely right. And Brian prides himself and his staff pride themselves on being able to give variety under the normal circumstances. And it's just not as, uh, they're not as able to do that right now. And that's disappointing, but they are, you know, starting to get some of the things that they're hoping to get.
Martin, are we at least, um, is it rolling out such that all across the district, we're feeling the pain kind of equally? Or do we have issues where certain schools are getting cold lunches more often than other schools?
Well, it is generally an elementary school issue in terms of the kits. The variety and some of the, you know, supply chain issues affect all the schools just because of what they can and can't get. But really what the elementary is, is because those schools usually have a smaller amount of staff in them. So when you, when you don't have a staff member, you're down to one person. And some of the other, the secondary kitchens, you can kind of pick up the slack a little bit to be able to continue to provide the hot meal if you have the ingredients for it. But once you get down to a staffing level where you can't do all the, the positions, then you're kind of limited in what you can provide.
Okay, so pretty much like from an elementary standpoint, other than staffing issues, I've got the same chance at Cascade Ridge and Apollo of getting a hot meal or a cold meal.
So depending on the staffing, so the cold meal is generally a staffing issue in terms of needing to go to a kit.
Okay.
Right, so then if we have to because of staffing issues, and that can be, it can depend on the elementary school. And sometimes we'll have temporarily, we'll have kits at one school until we fix the staffing issue there. And then for whatever reason, if we're unable to staff a different building, then we'll have to, to kind of convert to that for another temporary timeframe, so.
It's kind of moved around a bit, President Weaver.
Well, that's my hope, that, that we're not just constantly having one school that's getting the short end of the stick. That's really where I was trying to go with that.
Yeah, I think there have been some schools that have been a little more impacted than others, but as a rule, it's kind of a, it's a, actually a moving, it moves around. And I think some schools, if I recall, like Sunset has been kit, out of kit, back into kit at one point.
Yeah, and it's disappointing when it impacts one school a little bit more, but generally it's, you know, we, we are trying to fix that as they, as it happens and try to get back as quick as possible.
Yeah, cause we have, we have had just a handful of emails saying, well, my kid's eating cold lunch and her friend at another school isn't, so.
It does, it can happen that way, but as a rule, we're trying, we, we, we'd like to get back to where we can just do it as we've always done it. That's the goal.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Harlan?
Back to the vaccine. You know, our universe would be 8,500 students that would be between five and 11. Allegro on their website said they did 10,000. And they say, if you didn't get an appointment, you should check in with your school district. So I really think that we should be doing more if we at all possible. Children's also isn't scheduling right now and neither is UW or Harborview. So like it, it really, the need is still pretty.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I'd actually heard that.
So I, I, I would presume you would fill a couple thousand pretty quickly?
If we can get the doses and.
I think you can get the doses. I don't think that that.
Yeah, I'd heard that some of like Children's wasn't doing a lot of vaccinations in this, this round and, and.
Well, they're doing them. It's just they, they don't have the capacity. They don't have a high, they're not a high-volume capacity place based on how they set up. And remember, our hospitals are now in a different world as far as the busyness and acuity we're dealing with right now than what was last spring.
Yeah. Good, well.
Yeah, I mean, if Costco is up for another round and your staff isn't totally burned out. I, I saw you there the whole time. I totally get this is a ton of work, but I still think if we, if Costco can do it and we can do it, I think we should do it.
Have you talked to Costco about doing any more days?
Absolutely. So the goal was to get through the first, uh, four dates that we had on the books. Uh, and then they're definitely open. They're also helping quite a few other districts right now. So we kind of wanted to get to the, to the other side of those and then decide, uh, with the holidays and, and some of the scheduling difficulties, what it would look like. So we're really just waiting to get a little bit further on here and see what we could try to schedule. And they'll know a little bit more, um, by that time on what their supply looks like. So that's what, that's the conversation we've had so far.
Yeah, so there's definitely, um, an understanding that there's need out there. Personally, I'd love it if we can fill that void. I just think there's hardly any better PR that we can get than getting our students vaccinated.
It is the single best thing we can do right now to keep kids in school. So anything we can do to, you know, get more set up. I know, I know it is very taxing on the staff that needs to be there. But you also have a lot of, you know, volunteers from the community. They're trying to do as much as we all can to help you run those clinics and keep them going. And I cannot tell you how many families were just so incredibly appreciative of, of the way it was run, that they had this opportunity, the entire experience.
If, if the conversation isn't going to be till after the holidays, there won't be a need at that point.
Oh, so you think if, like, if we don't do it until January, we don't need to do it? Is that what you're saying?
If you don't do it till beginning of December, you won't get it.
Okay.
The sooner the better.
So we have, we have the second round in the one week of December, but I guess in a different week of December, we could do a second first round.
Well, that, the, the challenge is by the time you can do another first round, now the second dose is before school is back.
If you're going to wait till after the holidays, I wouldn't bother.
No, 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 she's talking about waiting till after the Thanksgiving holidays.
Yeah, I'd.
Yeah.
But they, but, but they can't do it before the Thanksgiving holidays because it's, I mean, it would have to be this week.
Or the first part of next week, I guess.
Yeah.
But I do know, if I recall, Martin, one of the challenges Costco had was their employees, the actual pharmacists and them also will be taking time off for the holidays and.
That's great. That's, that's what I.
I mean, so there's a staffing, their ability to staff these clinics as well.
Correct, because they've been running date every day.
Yeah, and I know they're doing three other districts in this area alone, if I'm not mistaken.
That's right.
Given that our second round is the week of the 29th, to schedule another first round, you'd have to go to the week of the 6th.
Right, and then the second round.
Hits right during the winter break.
Holidays.
We're going to continue to have these conversations though with Costco. There's no reason not to.
And then come back.
It was the week of the 13th and then the first week of January.
It, it would work on the calendar. I have no idea.
Yeah, well, and if it, if it works for them too.
I have full faith in Martin to work on the logistics.
Yeah.
We will have those conversations for sure.
Yeah, thank you, Martin.
Okay, were there other questions for the superintendent? Okay, a little behind, but that's okay. Good stuff. Okay, so the next thing on our agenda makes me sad. As probably most people know, unless they've been living under a rock, our superintendent has announced his intent to retire at the end of this school year. I would like to, before we just jump right into, okay, what are we going to do next? I would like to just take a brief moment to thank him for nine years of service as a superintendent, which I don't know the exact statistics, but I think that's way longer than the average tenure of a superintendent, which is probably, I'm going to guess, three to four.
Yeah, it's more like three years.
Yeah, so nine years is really incredibly awesome. And I have to say, since I was drafting that announcement from the board, I went back, did a little trip down memory lane and looked at all of the superintendent evaluations from the past eight years, seven years. Cause you didn't do one this year. Anyway, I was thinking, well, I've been here the whole time. I was on board that appointed you. I know everything you did. There was stuff I had totally forgotten about. I'm flipping through these. It's like T-Pep. I remember T-Pep. T-Pep seems like a hundred years ago. And, um, you know, we were on the forefront of that. The, um, I had to start at the beginning with the culture of kindness, which I think were your first words walking in the door. And that has just, I think that more than anything has really framed, um, what the district has been like for the last decade. And I mean, I'm not going to go through every single thing on here, but it's just, there was a laundry list of accomplishments. I had to cut it down for the, uh, the press release or whatever we want to call. there was a laundry list of accomplishments. I had to cut it down for the, uh, the press release or whatever we want to call it. So, um, and you know, as much as anything, I am going to say this part again, because you really have been an outstanding collaborator with the board, a partner to the board, um, more than a lot of other superintendents. And I can't tell you how much we appreciate that. And I'm going to throw this open to see if other people have anything.
Oh, goodness.
And we can just talk, we don't have to go down this road. We can go right to the other part of it.
We should go down this road for just a couple minutes.
No, I just, you know, uh, it's, it's been such a privilege to work together with this board and you as our superintendent. I have known you a very long time in the district because my kids went through, um, or at least one of them was at Issaquah Middle School when you.
Twenty years ago.
Before you came back, uh, or came to the central office. Um, and I think, um, being a part of this board and the collaborative work has made this what for most years has been very fun. Maybe not this last year, but most of this time. And the two things that do stick out for me, for you, that I will always think of when I see you is the culture of kindness and the green. You are so green and you bring our sustainability to be an essential piece of, something we don't even think about now because it's just ingrained in us and that's so important. So we, I will dearly miss having you here as our superintendent and I appreciate all that you've done for us.
Thank you. I do want to remind people that I have months still to go, so.
We'll have to plan a party.
I'll go. Although I was going to tell a story about kindness, so I guess I'll, I guess I will. So when I, I've been here through a lot of the non-fun years, so.
Yes, you have.
Be, be clear, I've missed most of the fun memories. We should send me away. But when I do remember coming to do the, I guess the interview when I was in the appointment process. And the question that was asked of me, one of the questions asked of me that's, that night was about, what do you think is going well in the district? And one, I thought that was an amazing question because people don't often focus on what works. Um, but as a, as a family that relocated here to Issaquah, the thing that stuck out to me when we, when we got here, having one in elementary and one in preschool, and they're now a lot older, was the culture of kindness. And that was what I said that night and having no idea that that was your thing. I had no, I didn't really understand what that was about at the time, but it was a marked difference than where my daughter had experienced in elementary school prior to our moving. And so that had stuck out to me. So I was just really, um, struck later to find out that that was a bit of your signature. So I, I thank you for that, but I think you've just always been very welcoming to me, taking the time to explain this, this incredible world, um, that I have joined and I've appreciated every minute of it.
I, I still don't know that we're, I'm actually going to let you go, but. No, I know. I can't make you. No, and I just, you know, this announcement was something that I was not looking forward to you giving, but I knew was on the way. Uh, your lovely wife has put up with you spending so much time with us and not her. So I do wish you all the best when the time comes that you'll actually be able to spend more time with her, um, and your family. But I, I go back to what do I remember? And of course, I won't be a surprise that I remember asking about data and not getting the data I wanted. And the next time that that data was, came before us, the data I had asked for was there. Because I think you understand that for a district that is highly performing, the only way we move the needle is by being intentional and by looking for where are specific things that we need to drive forward. And I think that, that was, uh, making our district move in a, in a new direction. By being able to say, you know, monsters live in the dark. If we don't know what the data is, we can't make any, any improvements and adjustments and it will continue to seep in there. So I do appreciate your willingness to be able to take a look at something that ended up being something we didn't want to see. And it was disciplined data. And, um, and it was exactly what I expected it to be, which is why we needed to have a discussion around it. And I think it fundamentally changed what it is we focus on as a district.
Yeah, you know, I, I joined late to the party. I wasn't part of him ever being a principal for my students, but you know, what really stands out for me is, uh, a couple of things. One, we've walked alongside this equity process and you've been willing to walk in and be part of really tough conversations, either with our community, with staff, with parents. And that wasn't easy. We were one of the first districts to do that equity work and put it into policy. And it wasn't even fast. I mean, two years is a long time to be doing that. You brought dual language to our district. We've brought a seven period day. And in spite of all these things that you've done programmatically, you have been always just a very fair and authentic leader. And I think that that gets lost. And that's not what we get to see across the state. And having been in another district and been on another board, you don't ever do anything to try and create divisiveness amongst the five of us or play us against each other or any of those things. And that is really, I think, a hallmark of like you're living your culture of kindness and how you interact with us. And you'll share things that we don't necessarily want to hear, but you're willing to share those things and ensure it really authentically. So at no point have I ever questioned where you're coming from or what your intent was. And I, I really, really appreciate that because that's rare. And you, I know you're still for several months, but I will be going through these several months of mourning because like, you're going to be so missed. Been grateful to walk alongside you over these past six years that I've been on the board. So, thank you.
It, I know you all have an important conversation you need to have. First of all, let me just say again, thank you. I have nothing but tremendous gratitude. I have always worked with a board of distinction. You have always, um, and, and I believe so much. And I, I hope for people who are contemplating, um, getting into the role of superintendent, that they understand the real power exists in the collaboration amongst the six of us. And then the expanded circle that are, is the team of people that support us. And I just feel incredibly fortunate and I've had real stability on the board as well. And, uh, every time somebody new came on, we just, we got just even better and stronger. And, um, I, I just can't say enough about this community. I know some people were almost surprised by the fact that I was willing to say, I genuinely love this place. And, uh, and I do. And that makes it hard to contemplate not being here, which is why I just push it out of my head and I say, oh, you've got another eight months to go. So, you know, quit, quit worrying about that. Just to comment, um, I, I, in terms of the culture of kindness, I genuinely believe, and I've stated before, that, that, um, that's good for all of us. The person who's giving the kindness gets as much out of it as the recipient of the kindness. And, and, and relationship to the organization, for me, it's just words. I just said a slogan. I tried to model it. But it's the people out there on the front lines. It, when you felt that Sydney, it was because of the people in that office of that school. It wasn't because of me. I can maybe set the stage for it and I can encourage it and do everything, but I just can't say enough about the staff out there who lean into it and, um, want to make this a, a kind, sustainable, safe place for, for kids and families to be. So, uh, I just so much appreciate the opportunities that you all have given me, um, that predecessors to you on the board and, uh, of course, the community and the staff. I couldn't feel more gratitude than I do in my heart right now for this whole organization. To those ends, I am here to serve you. Um, I'm going to run through the tape, as they say, as an old track athlete. And I am here to serve you in any capacity that I can. And I think the people of this community should be reassured that the five of you are going to select the next superintendent. Because, uh, for me, uh, it would have been hard for me to make this decision if, if I didn't have so much faith in, in the five of you and knowing that you'll, you'll just do awesome in this process. I was sharing with Director Moore earlier before the meeting got started. In a way, I hope that you can embrace this a little bit as an exciting opportunity as well. I appreciate all the kind words and, uh, again, I, I couldn't have enough gratitude in, in my heart. But, um, I have a lot, a lot of confidence and faith in the five of you. And, uh, anything you need me to do, short of staying beyond my time. I, uh, um, I, I am here to serve you. Um, yes, because I do have one other boss and she has a lot of pull in this particular area. And, uh, it, it's time for us to, uh, to kind of engage in the next phase of our life too. So thank you for everything and those kind words.
Okay, so I guess we actually have to talk about this. And we have had amazing superintendent stability in this district. So I think I'm the only one on the board who's been here long enough to remember the last time we did a nationwide search. You know, I've seen a number of snarky comments on Facebook of, I wonder if they're just going to fall into old habits and promote from within. And I'm thinking, we did that once. You know, it's not a habit. It's just, we did it once. But, um, but we've also done a superintendent search. Um, I talked to Tim Garchaw, the executive director of Wazda to sort of a help, what do we do? And he actually said something that I didn't see coming, which was, he said, go to your superintendent because he knows how to do an RFQ, which is a request for qualifications, which is like an RFP, but it's qualifications instead of pros. And he said, anyway, he said, your superintendent or your district staff can help you with that, put that out. Search firms will come back with their qualifications. We would then meet in executive session to discuss qualifications and presumably come back to public session to make a choice. He did say that probably ninety percent of searches in the Northwest are done by either Northwest leadership or McPherson. Um, McPherson and Jacobson, I think is their whole name. Um, I did go on the Wazda website where interestingly, they have a list of superintendent openings. I did not know this. And they list, I learned all kinds of stuff, website. They list the, um, the firms that those people are working with. And the other, those were not the only two that were listed there. There was also Ray and Associates, who I believe we worked with fifteen years ago, but I'm sure all the players are different. And somebody called Hazard, Young, Ateya and Associates, who interestingly, Highlight is working with. Sorry?
Yes, she announced that July. Just not going to be.
Yes.
She was number one in seniority.
Oh, is that right? Wow. So that is what I know. I will say that although I was here for the last superintendent search, I too was an appointment. I came on in January and the board had already chosen the search firm. So I don't know how that part works. I do know, um, how the part works when the search firm came on board. We did a lot of, um, oh, I'm blanking on the word focus groups with, um, different, um, segments of community. Like we did one with ISF, we did one with IEA, we did one with PTA, um, right, all the players. To sort of ask the questions of what are the characteristics that you want in your perfect superintendent? And then the search firm goes off and uses that to, to do their search. Tim indicated that, oh, they're getting very good at doing those in a COVID-friendly environment and do them remotely. I'm still thinking it would be something that would be really nice to do in some kind of a thought exchange, which would be way more inclusive. But that's probably a conversation for later after we actually have a search firm. So that is what I know. That's my data dump for you. Questions, comments, thoughts?
Uh, I think we actually should la- launch a thought exchange pretty quickly. And I think we take that data that we get and use that as a springboard for our focus groups. Because it's basically that way it can be a directed conversation with the focus group on, hey, here's what the ten thousand people communicated as bubbled up to the top. What do you guys think about it? And how, how can you enlarge on, on that or, or are you against that? That, I think that'd be a much more productive conversation and I don't think we need the search firm chosen by that point to launch that type of thing. And I think that really, it more sends a message on, we want to hear from you and we want to hear what, what you value. And that way we can get broad swaths of stakeholders, that is, community members, parents, staff. And I think that that, I, I, I want that information before I walk into a focus group. Because I, I don't, the voice of ten thousand is very different to me than the voice of twenty. And I think that, that will help us keep focused on what we want to do for representing the community values.
So you would do both though, is what you're saying?
I would do both.
Exchange and then do.
Right, I would use that information to then launch into focus groups. That, that would be my preferred approach. As far as a, a, a firm, I'm not convinced that we need to go through the effort to our staff to do an RFQ versus talking to a few districts who have just completed searches. And whether they give thumbs up or thumbs down for the two, instead of two of them do ninety percent, talk to a couple of districts and their experiences, and then I would just make a decision.
Learning. Um, to the first point, I, I really like the idea of doing this thought exchange soon because I think the announcement is fresh on people's minds and it shows that we're, we're starting this process even now, even though it may be a while before they get to the search firm. So I think their thoughts, having it fresh in their minds, like what do you want next? Um, I think would be important. And I like that as a springboard and we don't necessarily have to have our search firm chosen and it shows that we're having immediate action. Um, as well, it, it goes to kind of the bias we were talking about before, where you have, you know, a bias when you have small focus groups, you're going to hear from those groups and not necessarily the broader, broader folks. So I like that. As far as whether or not to do an RFP, I think it's more for me a, a whack or transparency issue. Do we need to have that documentation so that we can say this is what the board relied on in order to get that information? And that's, that's kind of a question and I'd love to hear from my colleagues on that because that's, that's the one thing that I think of about doing an RFP is the, just the logistics of having that paperwork and paper trail of how we made that decision.
And I totally understand that, that part of it. I think for me, it's like, we're all holding on by our fingernails right now. And the last thing we need is more what I believe would be unnecessary and unhelpful, about not value-added work to our district staff to do. Because it's not work that we would be doing, let's be honest.
Is it that hard for them to do though? I, I don't know what's involved. Is it that complicated to do an RFQ?
Well, I appreciate, um, Tim's, um, conversation. I've actually never done a superintendent search. The last time there was one, I believe I sent an email to the school board and I suggested that you should probably not get a search firm because I think we had a candidate and that I was that individual and we, we interviewed and we went that route. But going back to the previous one, um, so I would have to, in all fairness, I'll have to do some, uh, research into that. I mean, I, I do think, um, you might bump up against even some bid law stuff, so you might have to do something because of the size of the contract.
The lowest bidder. So it's not an RFP, it's an RFQ. So, so it's a request for qualifications. He said that you, you aren't forced to take a low bidder. It's not even about price at that point. It's just about, this is who we are, this is what we can do for you, which is why, um, I was like, he acted like this was the sort of thing that the district does all the time for other things. I, I don't know.
Again, we haven't done a search in over fifteen years, so it's, I, I know it is. I, I mean, I mean, there are some districts that have had five or six superintendents in the time that I've been here. So they might be some, we can absolutely, I can even beyond having to impose anything on my staff, I can immediately start making some calls and stuff. I mean, I, like I said, I wasn't kidding. I am here to serve you in this process. Uh, my DNA is in this place, so I, I want this to go as well as it possibly can. So I, I'm happy, um, to do some research on that side. And I, I have good contacts with some former soups and even some folks who, uh, are former soups who've worked for search firms and the like.
Yeah, Tim, I will add that Tim did say that he thought that Issaquah was going to be a very desirable spot for a superintendent to land, that even in. for a superintendent to land, that even in the small amount of time that had lapsed between your announcement and my phone call with him, people had talked to him about Issaquah.
That doesn't surprise me at all.
That, to me, was encouraging. My gut reaction right now, and I know other people haven't talked yet, is I think Marnie's right on the transparency issue. But Sydney?
So I like a combination of the two ideas. I actually would go to the neighboring districts, because we do have several, to get their RFQ from them and see what we leverage and speed that part up. I actually would want to do that step. I think the transparency is important, but I'm actually more concerned about bandwidth and conflict with recruiting in other districts currently. So I would like to better understand before selecting an agency, well, who are you recruiting for now? And what is your ability to actually focus on Issaquah? And so that's maybe the deeper reason why I would want to go through that. But I'm hoping we can pick up the starter information from a nearby district. And there was a really important second point that's now gone.
Right. Well, it'll come back to you and we'll let you talk.
And just as an FYI, Leisha and I had actually already talked about the possibility of using a thought exchange. That's a tool that didn't exist previously.
Oh, yeah.
That I think has real possibility. And I agree with Director Gallager. I think we can get that out there in a hurry and you can, you can start to get a sense right away what the community in aggregate might be looking for in terms of some of the characteristics they would look for.
It's another one of the lies.
That was my second question. And this is definitely a question, which is, what would, what would the thought exchange be focused on? So I understand and I agree with and I want general feedback. I guess I'm less clear when it's about filling a role, like what is the start, what's the starter question? Or what is it? I don't know. I'm just.
What kicks it off?
What kicks it off? What would we start with? Is it like a job description that people would comment on it? Is a, like, how would you get it started?
So for me, it would be sort of like, what, like, when you think about strategic direction that the district needs to go in, like, we need to know and present that to whoever the candidates are or whoever the recruitment firm is. And that's what they needed. So if, so for instance, I think if you would have done this 15 years ago, it was, we need to be, we need more academic rigor in our district, right? And that probably wouldn't be what comes through at the top.
No, I totally understand the why. What I'm asking you is to, what do we start the conversation with? Like, would we be asking people to comment on the characteristics or pieces of the vision of the district? That's, like, what would we ask them to start the discussions? That's my, what I don't have a good sense of in my mind right now.
Yeah, so for me, I would like to, I would like to know what the strategic priorities that the committee wants, as well as what are the characteristics of a leader that they value. So those would be the two things. And that would help us as well, like what characteristics do they want to see? And then, like, what do they hope that the process looks like? Because I think that's, we've heard very clearly that people don't feel like they get input into the process or feedback. So those would be the three things I would want to see, strategic priorities, leadership characteristics and process.
Yeah, one thing you have to be careful about on the process piece is that people do need to understand that this is ultimately a decision made by the five people here. Now, at one point, late in the process, 15 years ago, we brought two candidates to the district for like a meet and greet Q and A type of thing. We drove them around the district and showed them some of the buildings. And they met with sort of key leaders in the community who asked questions, blah, blah, blah. And people sort of got the idea that they then got to vote. And, you know, we need to be just really clear about the fact that yes, we value your opinion. But if we have candidate A and candidate B, and there's 20 people in the room and 15 of them really like candidate B, we can still pick candidate A for very good reasons. So yes, they can, they can provide input of what they think the process should look like. But I do, I want to have that caveat that it is the decision of the five people here. Because I think a lot of communities get carried away and think, well, and I actually, I heard this from a community, which will remain nameless, where they actually thought that there should be a parent group that chose the next superintendent. So, right, that's just my caveat.
I totally agree. I think for me, it's more like, hey, would they, would they find it helpful for a top candidate to have sort of town halls or Q and As? Would it be helpful, like, I don't know what they want and how they want to participate and feel like they are able to provide input to us as the decision makers? Because I don't think that the current process of them sending us email will be necessarily the best way in this scenario. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think that's a better question. How do they want to participate in the process?
Well, that's, you get to frame the question. I'm just saying, like, that's.
No, this is not my job. Okay. You know, December is coming. Oh, I'm sorry, Leisha. Did you want to talk to us?
I would love to. On the topic, am I on first? Because I know.
You are now.
There's like a process. I know, so I wanted to be sensitive to that. I've had a couple of conversations with some of, like, our customer success manager at Thought Exchange about this topic amongst other topics as well. They have a whole blueprint of questions you can ask. One of the things they recommended was a series of three questions where there's an initial question. And I was actually looking on my phone over there because I was trying to pull up the questions, which I couldn't find on my phone at this second. But I can share some of those resources because I think that might be something that you all might be interested in looking at as we kind of frame what those initial questions are to start the conversation.
That would.
I would love, I would love that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'll follow up with that this next week.
Yeah, because we can't be the first district that's ever thought, gee, this would be a good idea. We are a bit surprised. Anything else?
Do you have a timeframe? I think for me, that's, I wanted to skip moving and I worry that, like, we're, it is just before Thanksgiving. So the reality is, is we're talking after Christmas. So I want to make sure that we're lined up to really launch this. Like, stuff doesn't get done in a timely fashion this time of year. And that's my worry is that every, every day in a week, we wait later. Because, how many openings is there in King County this year?
There's already, I believe, seven, right, 19.
So seven, nineteen. So that's why I worry about.
No, I get that.
That's the balance of the transparency with, if we are not the early bird, then we miss out. And that's, that's my fear.
Could we launch the thought exchange, though, between Thanksgiving and Christmas?
No, I think the thought exchange could launch next week.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's the search firm part that, because, like, so if you do this RFQ and you go through and have to go through contracting and then you finally get signed contract. I mean, it just, all those things take time. If we haven't seen that with how long contracting takes to do anything in this community, like building schools, like, that's, that's my, that's my worry. That's all.
Right. I think we have to understand the process of this RFQ. And let's say, search for, it sounded like search firms send out their interest or qualifications to be this. What is the process then for the board to select the search firm? Do we interview the search firms? I believe, Tim led me to believe that it would not be an interview. It would simply be, they would send you like a packet and you would review it. Marnie?
So as somebody who is going through the midst of a national search for a CEO, or we were supposed to, and then NSBA chucked its policies, that's a whole nother topic. It is about, you know, doing the RFP, getting several of them back, reviewing them, and then deciding, you know, interviewing the top two or three candidates, depending on, you know, for us, it would probably be the top two would be likely, and then making a decision. So it is, so some of this conversation might be, yes, let's do an RFQ process, but let's streamline it, streamline it in some effect. These people do it all the time. There's no reason you have to give them a long lead time to get them a response because they just copy paste and make sure they didn't put Bellevue's name in there instead of Issaquah. So those kind of things, to be able to get it back to us in a really short order, like, we just need to know your qualifications. And so I think that we can shorten some of those timelines. But you're right, once you start in the, you know, do we want to interview them? Or do we just want to in exec session, review them and make our choice? I don't have a problem with that one either to streamline it. I don't know that I need to talk to them. Or do you?
I do. If we're going to go through the process, then we should talk to people. Otherwise, what's the point of us going, I could go through all of their websites, talk to a couple of districts who've gone through this. And that would be more valid to me than actually going through whatever they want to send me as their promo material.
Right, but I.
Otherwise, if we're going to go through the process, I would want to talk to them.
Right, and we need to talk to them because those that, first, we have to figure out who's going to be interested and have the capacity, right? Because we talked about, they could be involved in other superintendent searches. So either they may not be interested in ours because they have others, or we want to ensure that they don't have others that would conflict with their search for ours. And so we do, it can't just be reading stuff on their website. There has to be some sort of a dialogue with them. And I will, I do just want to circle back to what Harlan said at the very beginning. Even if we go through all this, I still think absolutely, if we want to reach out to other districts about their experiences, we should do it. Marnie?
I was going to say, the other thing is that, and maybe this is a thought exchange question, is I've heard kind of both sides of, well, we don't want to, you know, if we look at these search firms are really good at finding superintendents for Washington State. They understand Washington. Oh, we should pick a superintendent who already lives in Washington or understands, you know, is an educator in Washington State. But I don't know, I would be interested in knowing from the board's perspective, is that important to you? Or is this really a national search, not just a national search firm asking for somebody from Washington State? Because I really think that we need, you know, districts like ours are fairly unique. There's not as many of them in suburban communities, high achieving, but moving towards an extremely diverse population. So what can that look like? Who can we outreach to that's beyond the borders of Washington State? And I would be interested in looking beyond Washington State.
So looking beyond Washington State's a requirement for me. If nothing else, I think the conversations we had around some of the differences when we were talking about our special services review and the differences in approach and process that exist outside of the state of Washington, that would be incredibly important for me. I think Washington's a great place. I live here. But I think this is our opportunity. Issaquah is a top performing district nationally, and I think will be attractive nationally. And we should be focused on pulling talent that way.
Okay, so then we come up with, oh, I'm sorry. Well, no, I was going to say, we've talked about a lot of things. And there's a lot that we need to kind of go offline and figure out. Obviously, we don't need board action to start a thought exchange. That's just something we can work with Leisha. Do we need board action to do the, to kick off the RFQ? But can we just make a motion that says we're going to do it even though we don't actually know what it looks like?
All right.
Yeah.
And maybe the motion is to have to a subset of people who work it out, what it'll look like and what the process is.
No, I was going to say, or give direction to the president. So something where the board's giving that, that kind of off to somebody else to take a look.
I mean, that would be my thought as well. I was just throwing it out to you all to make sure. Somebody like to make a motion.
Well, or did you, because I thought I heard Director Morales say too, you could also just form a subcommittee of the board too, to go off and.
Right. The formation of a subcommittee does not require action. We would do the action when they came back with their recommendation.
Yeah, but that would mean that we'd have to wait until mid-December.
So again, that goes back to, does it take to actually put the RFQ out? And does it take an action of the board? Or is that where we're saying, can we, by motion and approval, give the authority to the president to do that?
Or can we do some kind of conditional motion where we say, you know, the board president goes off and pursues this and takes action if appropriate, or something like that?
Or, I mean, I think we're, we're not right now giving you direction to submit the RFP. We're actually asking you to probably come back and bring a recommendation. So I think.
And that wouldn't take action.
But then that would be so on December night.
That would mean that we couldn't take action until mid-December. That's the part that I'm having trouble with because I think we want to put out an RFQ. We want to do it now.
We may have to schedule an extra meeting to do that then. And it can be a video. I mean, we're not.
Yeah, you could do a remote, a virtual.
It's a single item.
And we're supposed to be together, well, we are supposed to be together on November 30th for the town hall. So another option is to, sorry about that. Got to make sure that's on your calendar, is to add something to that. And I don't know if any part of this is an exec, I guess it wouldn't really.
No, would not be.
An exec. I know the action wouldn't be. But, okay, so then just a short public meeting to talk about the RFQ. If it took action.
So we could do it on.
I'm just throwing it out there. We're all together.
Yeah. That actually, that's not too bad.
Because that saves us time before the December.
And we are live streaming the board town hall, so.
No.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, yes, we did. That's right. Sorry. I got confused with the listening session.
Wait, stop. Okay. We are live streaming the board town hall, so we could have a five-minute meeting right before it.
Nothing takes five minutes with them.
You know, I try so hard.
But yes, we could figure out.
All right.
So are we giving direction to our president to figure out how to do an RFQ?
To bring back something for formal action?
Yeah. And I don't think it takes a motion. I mean, I don't.
No, I don't think that takes a motion.
And if she calls up the immediate past president for support, she would be.
There you go.
Open to do that.
Okay, cool. All right, so I will work with my superintendent to figure out how that works. In the meantime, if you all, and I'm kind of looking at the end because you all have the most contacts, if you want to reach out to other districts who have done this in the past and see if they had good or bad experiences with any particular person, I would not be opposed to that.
And we're surrounded by districts that have gone through these searches over the past couple of years. Right, I mean, so Kwame Valley's done two in the past three years.
That means the first one didn't take.
Yeah.
Tohoma.
Tohoma did one.
Like Washington. I mean, Renton. So the districts that touch ours have had lots of experience over the past few years.
Okay. All right.
And we can also get working on a thought exchange too. And we could actually have Leisha kind of, here's what, what we think it would be, share it out and then as soon as we're ready to go.
Find that blueprint and shoot that out to the board. That would be awesome.
Yeah, so, so you could get a couple of things going. And two, I think it was Harlan's point earlier, you know, I've had to explain to people, you know, why, why would you make an announcement for something that's not going to happen for months? And in my mind, I was like, no, this is going to happen a lot faster than you all think. Because really, we can do some of this work between now and January 1st, but the bulk of it's going to happen there. And I honestly think your window is kind of that January to the 1st of April kind of timeframe. So when you think about it like that, it's really about three months.
No, and when we did this 15 years ago, as I say, I was installed at the first meeting in January, the board already had the search firm. So that had happened presumably in December or late November. Yeah, so.
You're right in the right timeframe now, but you know, that's why you want to be moving now.
Time is of the essence. I do agree with that. But I don't want to, I don't know, I feel like I don't want to skip steps and I kind of agree with Marnie that, that we should do all the things.
As long as we can do it without it being detrimental to the process.
Exactly, exactly. And I like the idea of starting the thought exchange right away. And that means we've got a really good sense of what the community is looking for, and that would be great. Okay, so I have my marching orders. Anything else on this?
Just make sure I'm calendaring. We are going to calendar that meeting, so don't forget.
Calendar, what meeting?
Yeah, the one that we just talked about.
But you're saying put it on calendar?
Yeah.
Or no, or?
Because we'll need to make a motion.
But we, I was going to say, we could do it now.
It, there's no action on this item.
Oh, got it.
But calendaring, you can do actions.
All right. Oh, my gosh. Oh, my gosh. We turn this job over in December, right? Shut up, Harlan. Okay. Thank you, guys. I think, okay, so the next item is kind of interesting. Remember when we had the retreat and we discussed Regulation 4220P and the fact that we were hearing all of these appeals, and it was a lot? And Andrea went through and, well, she talked to other districts. She revised the, the language of the regulation. So, two things happened. One is, it occurred to Marnie that since we talk about, in the regulation, we talk about the board president determining the level of review. We should have something in our governance policy that says that's one of the duties of the board president. But more to the point, and I think this part was Ann, we realized that the language in 4220, and I realize we're stepping out of our Board bailiwick just a little bit, but uses the term board of directors and board president kind of interchangeably. And unfortunately, if you're talking about the board of directors making a decision, it requires an open public meeting. If you're talking about the board president with input from the board making a decision, that's a change to the governance policy. So I think we're actually talking about two things here. One is something the board can do, which is add language to our governance policy. But I think we need to go back, or you need to go back and tweak 4220 so that it's clear. Okay, so it says, "The appeal to the board of directors is a discretionary review." That's fine. Says, "The board may decide to accept the superintendent's decision or review it." That would require an open public meeting. But then it says, "The board president shall determine the level of review." So I think we just need to re-tweak that, that it is in fact the board president who determines whether or not the board accepts your decision or takes the matter to an appeal to the full board of directors.
Right, and I think they need to be careful about using the terminology of determine the level of review, unless that's what they were referring to with simply level being superintendent or board versus the kind of review.
Right.
Yeah, cuz I, I think really what we're talking about, do we accept your decision?
Right.
Or do we agree to review the appeal? So it's not really, yeah, I think that level thing is confused.
I think the-
We either accept it, or we agree to hear the appeal.
Right. So, and, and the notion that it's the, if that is what is determined, is the right thing, that the board president determines whether to accept the superintendent's decision or review it, and then that review is of the board. If there is a review, it still goes back to the board or, you know, a quorum of the board.
Yeah, and I apologize that I didn't catch this when we first did the whole reading. I was more focused on, on the mechanics of do we review it, do we not review it, that I missed the, the board, board president issue. Oh, I'm sorry, Harlan.
Can, remind me, I guess I am a little confused from the retreat conversation. I thought the whole point of this next step was we were going to remove us completely from the process?
No, 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 no. Okay.
So I thought that was, I mean, when we looked at other districts, that's-
Not completely. We were saying that, okay, so all complaints rise to the le, to the level of the superintendent, not all complaints, but many. And the superintendent issues a decision. And then, as, as our policy used to read, then you could immediately appeal that to the board. And the board decided, no, there's too many of those. But I thought that the conversation we had was not, that we're not going to hear any of them, but we're going to be like the Supreme Court. We're going to look at it and say, yes, I agree to review that. No, I don't agree to review that. That's how this is written.
That, I know that's how it's written. I don't, I feel like that, that's not reflective of the conversation we had.
Oh, really? Cuz that's what I heard.
Oh, yeah, I thought we were out.
Oh, and see, I, my notes say, maybe the president and immediate past president review to decide if the whole board should review it.
I thought I was out.
Yeah, I thought, I thought the board was out. So I thought the whole point of this conversation was, was gonna be that we were going to not be part of this review process as it is in many other districts. Now, I'm not necessarily unwilling to have this conversation. I'm just saying, like, that was my understanding when I left the retreat, was that the whole point of this was that the board would not be part of 4220. True.
Okay, Marnie?
So if the board was out completely, then a community member who is lodging a complaint that disagreed with the superintendent's result, their only option then would be go, to go to the superior court, correct?
Yes.
So by taking us out, it puts more onus on. I, I think to me that that's a larger, I, I don't know if it's a, we don't think as many will come, but if it's a serious issue and the board has no say in it, it would go automatically to the superior court. I'm not sure what. I just, I just wanted clarity on that. I still think that.
And you-
There are certain positions and certain ones that we have done in the past where I think the board has come away with discussion with the superintendent or with the district, may not have been in agreement with the district's issue. And I just, I think that that's somewhat why the public hired us. And so I don't know, I, I do think allowing us the opportunity of deciding, is this appeal, essentially, does it have merit for us to be reviewing it? Or do we want to step aside and basically tell the complaint? And if you don't approve, if you do not like the outcome from the superintendent, you'll have to take it to superior court. At least, at least gives us a chance to put that decision together.
Sydney.
So, so I had a similar takeaway that Harlan did from the retreat conversation. And my understanding, at least where I landed on, why this would work to be out of this policy is because we would still have board participation written in view and other types of complaints and concerns. So I am, so I believe things around harassment, intimidation, bullying, some of those other policies, concerns or complaints would still rise to the board. And that this one specifically was the covering of, I would say, less to the core of what the, what we were here to do as a community, more operational in nature. That was my takeaway. I'm, I'm actually okay with the concept that it is more like the Supreme Court where the president, past president decide those things to take on. But that was my understanding of how we got to that in this particular policy, particularly after reviewing some of the other bordering districts. And that it was like, after, if you weren't satisfied, it was like, go to OSPI. That, I don't remember which district that was we read while we were sitting together, that that would be the, the approach. But I'm okay with this of, of reality.
Okay, so, so what you're saying is, because this is only talking about, not what you're saying, I think I'm still going back to Harlan, that 4220 only talks about complaints concerning staff or programs, that other complaints that were criminal or discipline or whatever, we're gonna still hear those anyway. So, so you were thinking that we were just never going to hear 4220 complaints. I have to admit, I was thinking we were gonna do a Supreme Court thing. But I have, I don't have anything definitive in my notes.
When we, when we looked, we saw basically three approaches. There was the approach you previously had, which was the most permissive. We found one other district that did that. There was districts that the, the board doesn't hear any of these types of complaints, as Harlan and Sydney were describing. And then there is that, that middle ground. We kind of drove down that middle path, if you will, but.
And I guess I worry the middle path is gonna set us up for more exposure than either hearing all or hearing that. Because I worry about the consistency or inconsistency or the potential call for any sort of discriminatory practice. I guess that's what I worry about, the, the some part, cuz we're not the Supreme Court, by any more close. So, like, we don't, we don't get that privilege. And the buck doesn't ever stop with us in that sort of legal framework. So I worry about that as a discriminatory practice that I, I feel uncomfortable with personally.
Ann?
So I was wondering, I did have in my notes that maybe it was Lake Washington that did it that way. And, and so one question would be, how many other districts? Is this again, if we were kind of one of the few that did it our way, which was we, it could always come to the board, is the method of someone, the president or whoever deciding whether it's reviewed, the other extreme, and maybe only Lake Washington does it? So we might-
I can't remember exactly what it was, but I know that we had examples of all three of those. I, I just can't remember, was there, were the majority of them saying just a blanket no? And like I said, we only found one other district that was as permissive as you all were previously.
I, I am intrigued by Dr. Gallinger's idea that this, that allowing us to make a choice, yes or no, puts us at the biggest level of risk. So I think that's a compelling argument in my mind to say it's either all or none. And I think at this point, all is more onerous and the public can even fathom. And it really has been costly for this, for the school districts, and costly for the community for us to review these. Cuz I don't think they know, you know, they're not, those aren't public, so they don't know how many we've been getting and for what, what reason. So given that, then I would be more inclined to say, yes, we should then step out of it. And then OSPI is their, their next, is it, so it's OSPI and not the superior court? If it's OSPI, then yes, they-
Oh, yeah.
They have a lot more money to be spending on stuff if they need to.
So, so if somebody doesn't like the superintendent's decision, if the board is out of it entirely, then it goes to OSPI?
That was the example that we read that day. I don't know.
Yeah, and I don't have-
If OSPI has a process for that or how it works, but.
And I think for me, because it, this is so narrow, I mean, it excludes, we're not talking about a lot of the other things that we will hear and still continue to hear that are obviously things we should hear. I think that's why I-
Right, cuz this is just the 4220 complaints about a staff.
Yeah, so like, discipline still has to come before the, I mean, some of these are in statute, have to come before the board.
Well, disciplined personnel issues. Yeah, right. Harassment, intimidation, and bullying.
I believe so. I believe that's when it has to go before.
Could that be explicitly stated in here? Cuz that is missed, that is not-
Well, but it's not about that.
No, there's, no, there's, it says, "This procedure is not for complaints arising out of student discipline, special education, or criminal in nature." So can we include harassment, intimidation, and bullying as part of that sentence?
I'm sorry, where are you, Marnie?
I'm in the, the second, the second paragraph before this listing of the steps.
Oh, I'm sorry. I see, the last sentence in the second paragraph.
Yes.
Okay. Right.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's why for me, I thought in this case, because those other things were all covered, that we would, we would not hear these. Because all of the things rising to, I think that the value of the time and effort would still be heard.
I mean, the beauty is, this is a regulation, and our process is simply, we go in, we change it, we take it, the changes before the cabinet. If, you know, we'll discuss it. If we get agreement, I sign it. And it becomes the new regulation, and we post it. So if my takeaway from this is that you would prefer this as a policy that does stop with the superintendent, that's easy to do. That, it's, and, and we had some correcting we were gonna have to do anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, I feel bad about this because the, the original change went out to the board, but I guess not everybody saw it, or maybe it only went out to me. Now I'm confused.
I, I can't remember.
Yeah, well, and in case, I feel bad that you're changing it twice.
I don't remember seeing it.
Again, you know, keep in mind, we change these regulations. I mean, a lot of times we have to, we review them every year because a lot of times we have to change them cuz statutes change.
Right, so I think, I, I think making sure to Marnie's point about if HIB counts in this, I liked her sentence where, you know, this procedure is not for complaints arising out of, and the student discipline, special education, or our criminal nature. And if HIB belongs in that list, then get it into the list.
I made a note to check that.
Should really be in that list to make sure that's thorough. Because then basically what we're saying is, for those things, it's a different process, and those things could come back before the board, but this one wouldn't.
Right.
I'll just, my final statement of why, you know, now that I've had a chance to have with my colleagues process this, I'm really at the point where, you know what, these issues that would come before this is the superintendent's wheelhouse. And so as a policy governance organization, we would actually not wanna step into this. And it's, looking back at it, I think it's a, it's a truer form of policy governance by saying staff and procedure issues, program issues, like program procedures, that's a, that's a means and should reside with the superintendent.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree with you. I was, I was so focused on the number of appeals that we've been hearing that I sort of lost track of the fact that 4220 is a pretty narrow-
It is.
Band of issues. It's just that that happens to be where we've gotten a ton of appeals lately. So as long as we're still hearing appeals on the scary stuff, yeah, I'm fine with it.
And again, remember to the system and to the community, we'll continue to hear appeals on 4220, staff complaints as well.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just the procedures of how they would be addressed would be different.
Yeah, right, and I, and I do think there are challenges with a system that has one person reviewing it, right, of the board by saying board president, right? Because then it is, yeah.
Well, we were gonna have with input from the board, but yes, I agree with you.
Yeah, so if we move in this direction of not hearing at all or just these types, then that also removes that issue.
Okay, in which case, no board action is required.
No. Some staff action will be required.
Is suggested, cuz we would never require it.
Yeah.
And now we're really clear that we've all had the same conversation. Cuz we went multiple places and we can't go back.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, Director Moore. I think it's fascinating that we had two different interpretations come out of our last conversation. So this has actually been very helpful.
Yeah, so, okay.
So I, I, I think I have a good understanding of what I need to do going forward.
Okay, and that, that works for everybody, right?
Did, did you, you found that, Director Gallinger, HIB is in statute? I thought it was, yeah. It's a, it's a relatively new law, and I would be shocked if they didn't make that go before the board. So we'll get that statement included in the front end too. I think you're right though, Director Maraldo. I think this, the, the regulation that was formerly the policy predated policy governance. I think it goes back a long time.
Yeah. Okay, I like that resolution. That was way better than what I was gonna suggest. Okay, so.
Winning, thinking one thing, came out thinking another.
Absolutely. That's why I like hanging with my colleagues. Okay, so the next item on the agenda, we went back and forth about six times of whether or not board action was even required. But we decided that just to play it safe, we would require board action. So do I have a motion?
I move the board accept the revised calendar for monitoring ends and executive limitations for 2021, 2022 as presented.
Second.
Okay, I'm not sure in the past if we have always taken board action on this. This is just a tweak to the calendar, and the tweaked calendar is attached. But Diane went back and said, "The last time we did this, we did make a motion." So we decided to be safe. And I think you, if you wanna take a minute to just explain what we're doing.
This is for something that will be very helpful to the staff. That's, that's really what this is about. We've got a lot of new people in our office. And, well, I know these monitoring reports always say the superintendent. Please do know that the person here to my right and the folks, many of whom have already left, and many of the people that work on those floors above us, they have a big role in getting the data. And so we have new people in our high school office, and E2 has a lot of high school information. And so we have new people in our high school office and E2 has a lot of high school information in it. And so this would, we, we much appreciate the willingness to flex the calendar a bit for us this year, just given the nature of COVID and the nature of our staffing situation. So this is much appreciated by the staff. You're willing to make this adjustment for us.
Any discussion or questions? Okay, there's a motion and it's been seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have a revised monitor.
You just made a lot of people happy. Thank you.
You know, it's the rare occasion when I can make people happy, so that's good. I'm sorry, did you have something?
No, I just said, and we're only 12 minutes late now.
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out, Marnie. Okay, legislation, Dr. Gallinger.
All right, just working with Diane to get meeting, we can settle, schedule with the fifth. And so I think we're close and hopefully we'll calendar some of that later in our meeting.
That's it?
Yeah, I, I think it is because we've talked about a lot of the other stuff. And I think, you know, we haven't ever as a board, at least in my six years, come up with formal platform legislative platform like a, like a lot of other districts have. I will say though, I think that the foundation of our conversation will continue to be what we've outlined in our letters and writing. So I think every legislator in our area knows what we're focused on. So I, I don't feel like we, I, I think we've been as active as we can and pushing against the walls as much as we can. What I would say.
Well, same back, back in the day, a long, long time ago, we did have legislative platforms, but that was largely because of the Olympian Coalition and we all, we all had to come up with a platform that it was, it was PTA and IEA and school board that all came up with a joint platform to give us more clout, but that was many months ago. Sidney.
Was there a response to the letter to King County?
Not yet.
I haven't seen one.
We'll follow up after, as the election wraps up.
Yeah, two people have been busy.
So, yeah, so we're just waiting on that and giving them time, so.
There hasn't been another response from OSBI either, has there?
Well, I guess like we, yeah, we, we met with Chris Riedel, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so he said. And, and, and our superintendent.
Oh, tell us about that.
All the money is already pre-allocated and you aren't going to get any of it. That's the summary, so.
Which is pretty much what he said in the first letter.
Yeah, as far as when we asked, where's all the rest of the money going? So.
Yeah.
It's that here are all these programs that we're going to do because this is what we believe. We mean, I think it's the I believe, and we're going to focus on doing this through the vehicles of community-based organizations. And so when the grants come out, you probably won't qualify, but thanks, have a good day.
And even a reference to our local levies, which almost made my ears blow off the side of my head.
Yeah, I would.
Fortunately, I had another meeting I had to go to, so I didn't jeopardize my reputation. But that was frustrating because we've had that, going back to the Olympia Coalition, you know why we were able to do that? Cause it was simple. We needed more money for the ISD because we were getting always the short end of the stick. Now I feel like we're back here again and it really, really troubles me. And I appreciated Representative Sin's honesty when we met with her about, we just don't get a lot of love often down in Olympia, us being East King County. There's a perception that all of our kids are just from wealthy families and we don't really have any problems. And if we do need money, we just go out to these wealthy people and they'll just give it to us without any questions.
Except there are limitations placed by OSBI on how much money.
Absolutely. They cap what we can and frankly, I think that there's a, an cap anyway. And that is voter frustration and fatigue with taxation and, yeah.
And more importantly, there's almost 15,000 students at free reduced lunch rate in East King County. That's a whopping number. That's bigger than most every district in the state of Washington inside.
That's right.
Big percentage.
So the scale is, is profound and yet we get ignored and we don't have that supersized per pupil funding that Bellevue or Seattle has to be able to support their super poverty.
And there's a differentiation of what is poor in East King County versus South King County that doesn't even get taken into consideration. So we have 15,000 students who, by the way, according to HUD, would be in extreme poverty, would be the definition if they're getting a free, free lunch in our district. That means they're in either very low or extreme poverty. That was so frustrating. It was basically, you're going to have to get the legislature to make me. It was essentially my walk away from the meeting with, with him. The legislature is going to have to tell me otherwise.
Yes, I'm game.
Yeah.
Well, and I just find this infuriating because I probably spent the first, I can't even do the math anymore, eight, 10 years on the board with the mantra of, we get less funding than Bellevue, we get less funding than Seattle, we get less funding than Mercer Island. It's not fair. It's not fair. We're the poorest ones. And then we did McLeary and it's finally like, we can stop having this conversation. We can stop whining about it. We're on an equal footing with everybody. How many years later is it? Two, three?
Three years.
I mean, and we're right back where we, everybody got more money than us, except I guess Mercer Island didn't, but.
Well, North Shore, yeah. I, I, again, you're absolutely right. It is deja vu all over again. We're having to constantly educate people about the complexities that are East King County, that it is not just Microsoft and wealth and mansions and we have no problems here. And it, it does, it's a little frustrating. We fought the good fight. We were very involved in McLeary. McLeary did a lot of what it was supposed to do and now the ESER funding has just put us right back where we were before.
And to be told that we're supposed to backfill that with our levies, I mean, A, we can't because they're capped and B, that's unfair to our taxpayers.
It was a little bit more nuanced than that, but I knew exactly what.
No, that was, that was pretty much what he, what he said. I think what it really was, was a disregard for how much we fund other districts anyway. Right? East King County is the fundamental funding for the levy equalization. And there was absolutely no regard to that whatsoever. That, you know, part of the reason our, our community feels tapped out is you are paying for, what is it? How many districts are LEA? A significant number of the districts, it's more than, what is that? Over, yeah, over, it's, it's probably around half.
Well, and, and I just, I find it so infuriating. There's a lot of arguments that you can make about, yes, we're a district of predominantly wealthy families, so we do need less money in this bucket and this bucket and this bucket. But that somehow we were impacted differently by COVID than our surrounding districts? That one makes no sense. And I worry, I worry for the levy that there's just this feeling out there that, oh, federal government threw all this money at districts, they don't need this. And that is, I think, a harder story to tell than the one that we used to tell about levy lists, right? That was relatively easy, but you start getting into the ESER dollars and people are going to glaze over. I just, I don't know, scares me. But anyway, that was my rant.
Yeah.
Anything else? Works in progress.
Okay, I did have a couple of things I wanted to highlight. Again, looking forward to joining my, my bosses of distinction at the WASTAFALL conference coming up at the end of this week. We'll be spending Friday and Saturday in, in Bellevue and some professional, professional learning opportunities. So I'm looking forward to that and we've all chosen to be in person, which thank you for that. It certainly helps me as well. So we'll be back. Also, just a reminder, our elementary world is busy, we'll be busy preparing for our elementary conferences, which are coming up on the first and second of December. Just wanted to give you an update on the CTE STEM department and Director Lisa Neighbors and her team in collaboration with some wonderful community partners are planning again for an in-person CTE STEM Great Careers event. You know, that had grown into be quite an event and of course, like so many things in COVID, moving virtual and all of that. But we are bringing it back. I should say they're bringing it back, which is exciting. It looks like we're probably shooting for a late winter, early spring, sometime in March. And I know, I don't know if it's 100% final, but I believe that they're going to move it to the Gibson Eck School for this coming year. Some of the large venues would be problematic because we would have to do a check of vaccination status. And since there is no vaccination status requirement to be a public school student in our schools, we can do it there. Now, we know because our data, we have data on our students, that the vast majority of our students are vaccinated. And of course, we know that close to all of our staff are vaccinated. So I'm not worried about it in that regard, but if we were to go to a larger venue, we would have to have some mechanism to check that. And I know that was a concern, but I just, I'm really glad that they're going to bring that event back. It's one that I've enjoyed. It, it's one that focuses on some of the non-traditional. As a, as a district that some years has the highest attendance rate going from graduation to four-year college, I, I think it's good that even in our district where it's like 85%, that's 15% of our kids that are looking for other alternatives. And I, I've always enjoyed that this, this event highlights some of those other post-high school options for students. And then lastly, again, I just wanted to, to thank everybody in the community who has reached out to me after my announcement of my pending retirement. I got to hear from folks that go back in my career many decades. So that's been a lot of fun. And again, I just wanted to thank the school board for your message that you sent out. That was very kind of you and, and much appreciated on my part. And so that's all I had to share tonight.
Thank you. Where am I? Announcements and correspondence. We have announcements and correspondence listed attached to the agenda. Does anybody have anything?
I did. So I have various from East King County School Board members, B Tally regarding an investigation into Texas curriculum, P Doyle, who is an NSBA board member, M Der Vigio from the C W U Samamish regarding the advisory board meeting minutes, G Jensen regarding cultural competency curriculum, Representative Adam Smith, who is hosting a town hall on Tuesday, November 16th, if you are interested, if you are member of the ninth congressional district, let me know. I can forward that to you. J Hess regarding Washington State Highly Capable Advisory Draft Agenda. And M Dorman, the Assistant Director of Governmental Affairs and Special Projects for this Noqomie Indian Tribe in their introduction that Director Sivadasan put my way. A Harrison, a journalist requesting an interview for which I told her to look to either a board president of whatever. It was both NSBA and the ISD and I'm like, I'm not going to talk to you. King County Districting Committee, by the way, the final public hearing in town hall for the final draft map, and this is for the King County districts, will take place on Tuesday, November 30th at 2:00 PM. So if you're interested in attending that, let me know. I can forward that up. R Maloney regarding policy governance breakdown session invite, which I'm not sure if all of us received, but. And then I saw, I saw like nine other ones in my email that I did not see, but I think that came to the whole board. Did you want me to list them out? I have a J Stich from the Center of Educational Effectiveness regarding the Board of Distinction, and E Buck regarding lockers at the middle schools, a J Frohman regarding vaccines versus masks, A Dunn regarding congratulations on my reelection. I think that was actually just to me. S Sabaya regarding possible closure on Friday, which we didn't have, thank goodness, thanks to the superintendent, I should say. J Louder improved emails to family, M Stevens outreach search for superintendent, R Portman regarding the flash curriculum, and M Doratus regarding meeting minutes, which she spoke to today.
Right. Okay, thank you. Was there anybody else? Okay, calendar and future agenda topics. That's on there. Okay, WASTAF annual conference. Apparently we have four students attending. This would be Friday and Saturday, I assume.
On Friday and Saturday, yes.
Okay.
I don't have any RSVPs for dinner, though.
Yeah, we, so we have dinner for Friday at.
Did you send it out? Oh, I never thought.
I'm sorry, I didn't send it out for the board.
Oh, you sent.
We're waiting to see if we heard from students, so.
I'm sorry.
We do have a reservation though at Tavern Hall for dinner Friday night.
Okay, Friday.
And Tavern Hall is a restaurant, so our students can just come, just because it has tavern in the name.
It's a good restaurant.
Yeah.
So Anna and I are attending on Thursday. Is anyone else going on Thursday?
I have to check to see if, I have to check to see if Michelle Cho registered me for that one, because we have a board meeting that evening, but I think I scheduled it for.
Well, Anna and I are going to the law conference, so just making sure if you were there, I was going to say hi. December 2nd, possible visit to Bellevue School Board. That must be just for me.
Yes, that's you and I finally going and thanking them for Riedel, I believe is what we were thinking there. And I think that's like at 4:30 or something.
Well, good, because the levy committee is at 5:30 and I want to go. I had actually a question about the levy committee meetings. Those are in person, so will they not be live streamed? I should have asked this. Josh is still in the room.
I don't know the answer to that. I know we are going to be in person. Whether or not there'll be live stream for people to view, that I don't know. We're doing them at Isquah Middle School Library.
Okay, oh, that's good. See, I would have turned up here. Thank you for that.
There'll be a message that will be going out too.
That's true. I knew that.
Yes, that's why we moved out, out of this.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. Yeah, it would, I don't know. I think there might be, I don't know how many people would watch it. It's sort of like watching the sausage be made, but it's always something we point to for transparency that we do have this committee going through all these things, so.
Yeah, I mean.
It might be worth considering.
To find out just what it would take to, and it might be easy. I, I don't know, but I'll find out. They may already have decided to have a plan.
Okay, so yes, I can do 4:30. I would like to be back there for the levy committee, but that shouldn't be a problem.
I can reach out to them too and see that, that meeting would be a good meeting. That's going to work for them. I just, Diane just got when they have their meetings.
Oh, okay. Well, it would just be two or three minutes of public input, so.
That's it.
Okay, and then, oh. The inter-district student council meeting, Andrea had given us the wrong date. It was, it is now January 13th at 4:00 PM. This was the conversation we had with regard to the student reps. Now, I have in my notes that we were going to revisit this conversation in December. What I don't have in my notes is who was doing it. I thought it was Sydney and Marnie. Okay, because it says Sydney and Anna and I was confused. I thought I misremembered. Yeah, it's Sydney and Marnie. It is Sydney and Marnie. Okay, so are you guys going to be, well, one, does the revised time and or date of this meeting still work for you guys?
Board meeting day, right? 1/13?
Yeah, I believe so.
So we'd have to have a conference room available here for us to zoom into?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, well.
Yeah, if we, yes, if we come here, that would be, that would be the best way to do it.
I wonder if they meet in this building? Oh, so that's interesting. So then.
She sent, she sent a Zoom link, so I'm assuming my speed meeting via Zoom.
Yeah, I am assuming that that meeting is via Zoom. The initial one was in person, but I don't know if they all are.
The time, so the time works, so this is fine.
Yeah, there, there wouldn't be any, I mean, I'm assuming there wouldn't be any problem with finding, you could just zoom from our conference room.
Yeah.
So that wouldn't be.
So that'll be fine.
So are you guys going to be okay with being put on December's agenda to discuss?
Yes, I've decided that's one of the next things I have to do.
I just, you know, because we'll be doing agenda planning. Okay, so that's good. And I will let Andrea know. And, oh, it looks like we're calendaring a meeting. So if the. Um, so if the, um, turning off my phone. The, the board town hall is six? I want to say it's six. Is that, oh, seven?
Seven, I think, yeah.
Oh, well, then that's easy. You want to calendar it at, um, 6:30? How long can it take us to decide whether or not we want to put out an RFQ?
Uh, you better set it for four. No, I'm just kidding.
The town hall starts at seven.
Really? After we showed you all that.
That wasn't very kind.
To be at Liberty?
Oh, Liberty, oh.
This is at Liberty High.
It's at Liberty.
So 6:15?
Really, you want to say 6:15?
Am I wrong with that?
I think to get, because if we have our conversation, we still want a time to stop while people are funneling care and all of that and.
I mean, of course, we could always do it after the town hall, but.
No.
No.
No, you're gonna.
No, because they're going to want to talk to us afterwards, you remember that.
Um, well, she doesn't actually, she wasn't that the other one.
They'll want to talk to us afterwards.
Yeah, there was more.
You will remember.
Oh, there was a lot of talk. It was good, I, I thought it was.
Well, I will entertain a motion.
You guys have a good time.
I move the board hold a special meeting on November 30th at 6:15 PM at the Liberty High School Theater?
Second. You said that like it was a question, yes, it's the theater.
Well, I just want to make sure we want to hold it in the theater there.
Uh, unless, yeah, I don't know, do we have to say the exact room? I guess it's a, it's a public, I mean, I, I'm not trying to.
Well, no.
I don't know if we interfere with them getting things ready by having a, a meeting in there right before.
Well, unless we.
No, no, this is good.
Oh, you can test it.
We want them actually ready to launch at 6:15, so no, this is good. They should do it and we should launch it there.
So Stephen, are you okay taping our live streaming our school board meeting before the town hall?
Does he know he's supposed to be there?
Well, we were just talking about it, so obviously you weren't listening. Yeah.
Are we in the pack or are we in the library?
They're in the theater.
Oh, Liberty, we're at.
Oh, we're in the theater.
Okay. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so 6:15 special board meeting. What am I missing? Anything else for the good of the order?
Oh, yes, there's a couple more things.
Of course there are.
Uh, so the fifth, let us say, district linkage is going to be uh, that same day.
Oh.
On the 30th. Well, the district can really get their money's worth out of you. Um, at 11, between 11 and 12. So if there's one person who wants to join me that especially lives in the fifth, Sidney, that would be great.
Oh, and so this is just for two board members?
But yeah.
Oh, okay. Oh, because he said linkage, so I was, but this is a Zoom meeting, right?
Yeah. Well, we haven't said it, but we'll presumably do it.
Yeah.
I think it was easier that way.
Yeah.
He said 11?
11. And if you can't, I totally understand, but it's, it's been like hurting a lot of really crazy cats to get us this far. So.
11:30 to 12:30 I could do for sure, I can try to figure out 11.
Diane's been a saint with all of this. Trying to get our legislators, um, on board.
Diane takes, thank you Diane.
Is there a secondary person if Sidney can't make it?
I mean, I could. I don't live anywhere near the fifth, but.
You kind of do, you can almost throw a frisbee.
Yeah, you look closer to the technically, and the rest of us near, we're also in the 41st.
Yeah, it's Kohani, so I mean, you could like, get on your roof and throw a frisbee real far.
You, you vastly overestimate.
You drive by very close.
Kohani, I know.
Yes.
But, um, I can do it if Sidney can't. I do think Sidney would be better, but I, I feel her pain in trying to juggle three lives.
I get it, I just, I tried to coordinate it with people where they live.
Yeah.
Uh, and then while she's thinking about that.
While she's thinking about it.
The, uh, I, I do believe as far as a future agenda topic needs to be the levy timing. And because I think that it would be who the levy committee to truly know what timeframe that they're going to be really talking about. Because, right, it's not just are they, what, what package are they putting together? It really is for them to be the messenger of it.
Absolutely.
And so I think that uncertainty is an unfair cloud for them to live under. And I do believe that we need to just put that conversation to rest, however uncomfortable it's going to be. But I think for the sake of all of our community volunteers who are going to be gathering, that we need to hash out a date. That would be my request, uh, agenda planning you guys talked about, adding as a agenda topic because I think we do us and our community no favors by not having that clear ahead of time.
Okay.
I have noted it. Um, yeah, it's interesting, I was thinking we would do it all at once, but I, I take your point that it would maybe make sense to do the timing first. Okay, um, anything else? Or anyone, Sidney's still trying to figure out.
I'm typing to my.
No, you're fine.
My business.
In this one, you guys, as long as you have a backup, it doesn't matter.
We'll be okay.
There's no action, you can work on it and it's, you don't have to get it worked out this minute.
I, oh, yeah, hurry. Giving you guys the opportunity to, okay, we're adjourned.